Your agents? Next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, August 25th, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center at 3500 Edgewater Drive. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any comment? Public comment on the consent agenda?
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. I'll need a motion to accept the action agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any comment? Okay, go ahead. Any public comment on the action agenda? Okay, good.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. First resolution is Resolution Number 2017-07-21-38. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award contract for electrical engineering services to Craig A. Smith and Associates Incorporated.
Motion approved.
Second.
Supervisors, this is a professional services agreement with Craig A. Smith and Associates. On June 9th, the Board awarded a request for qualifications, 17-02, to Craig A. Smith. Mr. Jim Orth is here with us today. He is the Senior Supervising Engineer and Project Manager for Sun and Lake, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Orth.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You're welcome. Happy to be here on behalf of Gene Schreiner, our President. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here today. He was on vacation this week. We're happy to be here and happy to help you out. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them, but otherwise, looking forward to working with you.
Kind of remind me, because I'm old and I forgot, is there a cap on this? Did we say there was going to be a cap for the services? Or is this a...
No, we did not. This is going to be based strictly on the hourly rates that are attached here in the resolution.
Okay, so if it's 1,000 hours or 500 hours, it's whatever it is.
Well, I mean, they're going to submit a proposal for any of the jobs, and then we have ability to take a look at that at that time, so.
Okay.
It is going to be an hourly rate.
Yeah.
And then, in addition, if it's a major project, it gives you the ability to design the project and include those hourly rates within the project.
Correct. Correct. Basically, we've met with Mike, and you've got some immediate electrical needs at the water treatment plant, so we've put together a proposal, and there'll be a lump sum amount or a cap on that or an hourly amount associated with that, and you'll get to review that and the hourly amount and approve that before we go to work. So, other than that, we're on an on-call basis, and we won't be billing you unless you call us and have something you need us to look at, so.
Okay, and that's the one, I guess I was confused on. It's the one where we were talking about the water treatment, and I saw that, those numbers, and I knew this was an hourly rate. I just didn't... So, this is just future services, period?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's our general services, so as issues come up and you need some immediate help or you need us to come in and meet with you, something, or look at something, we'll be available to do that. And then, as a project comes up and it's got a defined scope of work, then we'll submit a scope of work with an estimate of the fees or a lump sum amount, and then we'll get that approved before we go to work on it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. When does the checkers start on your projects? Does it start in Boca or does it start when you're on site? As far as your hourly rate goes?
Usually when we get here, yes.
Well, asking.
Okay.
Because it's a three-and-a-half, four-hour trip over here.
It's a two-hour... Well, actually, I live in northern West Palm, so it's a two-hour ride over for me.
Okay. So, it's still, two hours adds up?
Understood.
Going here, coming back.
Understood.
How many people responded to this RFP? Just one or just them or...
We had two.
Two?
Yeah.
I think that was really the question I had. Oh, the question I have is, but that's more of a budget thing. I wasn't sure where this expense was in the budget. I found two consulting, one in utility and one in... But the numbers didn't change much. I mean, you went from like 32 to 40. Obviously, his work is going to encompass more than $8,000 worth of fees, so where is that in the budget?
We have engineering fees within the Water Utility Fund. I think it's about 40 grand. But when he said when he builds a project budget, his fees are going to be incorporated in that particular budget, so we'll make sure that we have budget at that time.
Yeah, but Mike...
So, any hourly rates will be billed to the engineering fees. So, if it's just general consulting or Mike needs to get on the phone with him for 30 minutes, I mean, that's where we're going to post the expenses.
And you think that would be under $8,000 a year?
We have, I believe we have 40,000 budgeting in engineering fees.
Well, you know, that you spent in the budget for this year is 32,000. That's my point. So, is it zero this year in the utility fund for engineering?
Are you saying that we spent 32,000 so far this year?
That's what it said.
Okay. I don't know what we spent.
Oh, I mean, that... Excuse me. You didn't spend... I'm not saying you spent. I'm saying that was your budget number.
Oh, that is our budget, okay.
Actually, I didn't take the time to go look at what you actually spent.
Is that includes adding a new building and stuff, right?
Omar, do you know, is it 40,000 for next year that we have budgeted just in generic engineering fees and utility?
Yes.
Okay, so we have 40,000. And we didn't anticipate to start this soon either, but with the immediate needs of the water plant, we were going to go ahead and...
I just want to make sure we don't have any surprises six months from now.
This year, we spent the 32,000, but we had a lot of projects going on at Unit 23 that won't be happening next year, so we won't be using that a lot of 32,000 next year per se.
All right.
Our majority of our expenses will go to the water plant.
Okay.
And the new building.
Was the other responder, I should say, local or not?
They were at Winter Haven, I believe.
Correct. Thank you.
Oliver?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks again.
You're welcome.
Is there any public comment?
Good morning. Phil Norcross, resident. Just a couple of quick questions that probably the general public would want to know. This is not an exclusive contract, but you, I think you asked for it because there were two bids, correct?
Right.
All right, and this is on engineering, and the young man is going to come from Palm Beach, which seems like a long distance away. Wasn't anybody local that applied, that qualified for it?
Apparently not.
Apparently not? Okay. Just curious about that bidding process on it. It seems though Florida is a large state, and there's only two engineering companies that bid on this project. Hope it goes well.
Any other public comment? Okay, Mike, do you have something?
The firm that Jim works for, they also do work already here in Sebring. I contacted the companies they work with, and their references were very, very good. They said the response time, if you call them at 8 o'clock in the morning, they'll be here by 10, you know. And usually, the contracts that we put out, we want a two-hour response time, so I don't have any problems with the distance they're coming from, so.
Thank you, Mike. Chrissy?
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Resolution Number 2017-07-21-39. A resolution of the Sun and Lake Sebring Improvement District to approve Budget Amendment Number 7 to the 2017 budget to reallocate 17,000 to Gulf Capital. Can I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Omar?
So, as you mentioned, this is a request to move 17,000 from the general fund into... We're just reallocating line items, what we're doing. There's 15,000 allocated to the Administrative Department for server and computer upgrades, and there was 10,000 in the utility customer service line item that we need to transfer to Gulf. Our IT consultant, a few months back, wrote a statement saying that, you know, the Gulf server and the backup system needed to be updated. It was more urgent than the district, so we just want to be consistent with our coding and our accounting, so we're going to code them to Gulf Capital because it is a Gulf Capital expense. We just need the budget to be there in order for us to code it accordingly.
Any comment?
No.
No.
Is there any public comment? Okay, Chris.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Resolution Number 2017-07-21-40. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District requesting the Board of County Commissioners, Highlands County, Florida, to amend the Enabling Act of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District by amending Sections 9-102, 9-103, 9-104, and 9-105 to amend the minimum maintenance standards, nuisance abatement, and civil citations.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, so we're going to do a little bit of talking about this before we actually approve it. There's several sections in here that I think in your packet are highlighted. We're based on the last time we discussed that we need to make some choices on the final version of this document. The first is on Page 5, under brush growth. Originally was listed as, you'll see there, it's now listed as eight or 12 inches. Originally, it was 12. Supervisor McCullough suggested we might want to lower that down to eight, so I'll put that in there. And if you want to take a quick, have a quick discussion or just take a quick vote on whether we want to keep it at 12 or reduce it to eight.
Actually, in the discussion, I suggested six or eight inches, and Mr. Brumfield kind of agreed that the lower it is, the better it is for us, because by the time we actually get a citation through the process, the grass has grown to 18 inches or whatever, the weeds, I should say, not grass, so I would like to throw the six or eight or 12 on the table as far as that goes.
Well, yeah, we can make it whatever number you want, but that's what we want to talk about right now, is what number do we want in that box?
Anybody else?
Just a comment on it. I think six is a little too short, and I experienced it this week just watching or seeing a lot on my street. We happen to have a lot of rain this week, and within a few days, it probably grew, I think... Bob, is he here?
No, he left.
He had indicated that, you know, in the course of a few days, he certainly can grow several inches, and if we put the limit of six, it might follow suit of what Kurt said. We can get the citation out sooner, but I think it's going to create a lot of work for our code enforcement people. So, I would tend to believe that maybe eight, in my estimation, would be a better number. I think 12's too high. I think eight is good. I think they can get the citation to the people, and they should be able to get a cut relatively soon. That's just my thought.
Mike, what's your opinion on that?
I like eight. I mean, six in a week, it's going to be eight anyways, and by the time we get everything out, by the time we get the paperwork, so, I mean, eight's good.
I mean, I have my lawn cut every week, as most people here or some do their own, and this week, it was almost five inches when they came, so.
Well, my grass never gets real big, but I got some weeds to get. I mean, I'm not kidding you. So, I don't know, does the weed mean that too?
Yeah.
Because God, mine get 15 inches in a week.
Where you starting?
Yeah, okay. Anybody else?
I'd say the eight.
Do I do a public comment on each one of these or...
No, we don't do public comment on each one.
Okay. What do you guys come up with?
Dave's fine with me, I just wanted to bring it up.
Make the eight.
Make it eight. All right, next page, under Section 1, Parking Motor Vehicles on Lawns Restricted. I added in two places, you'll see there, the last one, a prepared service. That's just for clarification, that wasn't there earlier, but just wanted to clarify that if you're parking, you are allowed to park on a prepared service. That's the whole point of what we've been doing. We've changed prepared service to remove moles, not allow to park on your grass, but if you've got a prepared service, you're allowed to park on it. So, just explaining, putting that in there to basically clarify.
Yes.
Down at, under Section 4A, this is the part about the recreational vehicles of boats. Okay, first of all, we have the 18 feet or 12 feet. It was 18 feet, and it has been suggested to reduce that down to 12. So, we need to decide if we want to leave it at 18 or reduce it to 12 or select some other number about the length of the boat.
What will happen, David? There's a lot of people that have boats, they're certainly greater than, you know, they're up to the limits right now. What happens to them? Do they just get notified? Do they have X amount of weeks to find a place to store it? Or how do we accomplish that and how do we enforce it?
That would be my recommendation, is just let people know, you know, once this is... Because technically, what we're doing here is this is going to be a proposal to the Board of County Commissioners. And so, while we may, you know, we're saying that we want to send to the Board of County Commissioners, this is not going to become official until it's adopted through a VOCC ordinance. So, once that happens, it'll be on the books, and we'll be able to let people know that, look, you know, this is now the law, and this is the code, and we are going to start enforcing it. So, my recommendation is, would be to, whatever we decide on today, to let people know, look, this is what we're sending to the VOCC, you know, we expect it to be on whatever agenda the VOCC agenda it'll be on, and let them know that if it's adopted, these will be going to affect, and we're going to start enforcing them by date served. So, they should have plenty of notice from whatever we decide on today until when it actually gets adopted by the county to make arrangements.
Okay, thank you. I would be inclined then to make it 12 feet. That's just my, once again, my personal thought.
Any other thoughts?
Mine as well.
There? I'd go for 12, but you know, I was driving around this morning, and I saw a boat in a driveway that was larger. It was higher than 6 feet, larger, so. But it had it neatly parked in there, and it had it covered with a professional cover, and that made me start thinking that there's... That guy's not the guy I'm worried about, you know. It's the guy that just backed a boat in there, throws fish out in his neighbor's yard. So, that's pretty tough, but I'll go for 12, say for that.
Make it 12.
All right. Then, right next to that, we're changing, we're talking about changing the height, it was no more than 6 feet, and now we're talking about raising that down to, potentially raising that down to 4.
Right, and I would say, my personal opinion once again, would be the 4 feet specifically. If you're going to go with a 12-foot boat, I don't think you're going to have something that's that much higher.
Four feet, guys?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Dave, this up here on one, are you just going to make those changes?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that that's... I put that in there based on the discussion we had, that it wasn't really clear, so that was in there for clarification.
Thank you.
Before you move on, also in that same paragraph, we discussed utility trailer changing the height from 6 feet to 4 feet. Either you missed that or whatever.
Okay, right there next to it?
Yeah.
And the bigger we need to talk about is the next one, which is the and or the or, because it reads, currently reads and, you can have a boat and the utility trailer, and I think we just discussed this about changing, that you get one or the other.
Right.
So, we want to talk about, is it one or are they allowed to have both?
Or is my preference.
I have one thing. David, you were going to say date certain, but it's this... The rule of ex post facto, does that remain in effect here? I mean, someone who got that boat?
Grandfathering or anything like that?
Right.
It's not going to come into that. These are... It's not like we're changing that, so we can have them all as part of their house. That's kind of something against grandfather. You've got a permanent structure, you're not forced to bring it into compliance, but I think if it's converting, come through, and we're supposed to play through, the new roof they put on, they have to put into compliance with the new code. So, just like here, you know, if it's a building that we're talking about, there is some stuff in here that we're talking about, going to get a change in building, but that's kind of stuff against grandfather, but mobile vehicles.
Okay. Just a question. Did you say either or?
That's what we're... That's what we're talking about.
And that's what we're at right now.
Yeah, right now, we're at the end. They can have one of each, a boat and a utility trailer, versus just taking it at 4 or 1 or 2.
Or, I go for an or. I do have another question as it pertains to trailers, though. A lot of people here have, they're in business, they have these trailers that are pretty tall, they're covered closed trailers and not the typical open trailers. So, those people with businesses are going to have to also find a new location for their trailer, okay?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, that was just brought up to me yesterday. A guy that's retired, he does handyman work for a lot of people around here, and he purchased his trailer in Georgia, he lives near back to back, and he was asking about that, and said, well, we're looking at something different. He's pretty upset about that. He said, I got a business I got to run.
What was the length of his trailer, did he say?
I saw it. It's probably a 10-foot low bed that he keeps motor on, equipment on, stuff like that. But, I mean, you know, he's a pickup, he carries all his equipment around with him everywhere he goes, and he happens to live in Sun and Lake, and he doesn't have property outside Sun and Lake. He doesn't have a storage area, because he was one of the people that was on the list and wanted this storage area built, so he parked over there for him. Be done with it.
And there may be others as well that this affects, you know, mainly?
Yeah. Certainly.
That comment, isn't it a violation to run a business out of your resident home here?
Yes.
Is that true?
Yeah.
So, he's basically in violation right now.
Yeah, well, you don't have a law list when you start with that.
Well...
It's clearly, I believe this will impact a lot of people, the open trailers where they have their equipment in it, lawn mowers and so on. They relocate that someplace else that's going to be accessible to potentially theft. Whereas the others that are enclosed trailers are lockable and can be moved elsewhere, they are a lot higher in height, though. They're over 6 feet, most of those. So, I'm sure we'll get a lot of pushback. That's not... I'm not changing my mind on the direction I feel we should go, but I think that Michael and his organization should be aware that they might have some challenges.
So, we understand that already, wherever you get them, am I right in your soul?
Okay.
And I feel bad about the whole deal, but I don't want them as my neighbor.
Yeah, absolutely, I agree.
I got to think of it that way.
And the main thing to remember is, this is not, we're not outlawing them, they just can't be left in the open.
Right, right.
They need to be under some sort of a carport or some sort of structure.
Okay, let me ask you something. Kurt brought this up, and I couldn't find that anywhere. They're doing business out of your house, and new, you couldn't do that. Now, we started that with an Inc., LLC, or what you're doing?
No, I think that means, and I'd have to go and look at the exact language, but my understanding is that we don't want business traffic in a residential area. So, if you're running a business, and so that's what I'm saying, when you talk about these mobile businesses, now, at the same time, we don't want people putting up signs and stuff. That's what a lot of people do, they have their trailer, the trailer's got the business name on it, and they just leave it sitting, you know, outside. That's the kind of stuff we're trying to prevent, but, and I'm going to look over, because there's been lots of talk about it, about this, you know, running a business out of your house. I'm sure people run internet businesses out of their house, but it's not bringing foot traffic or vehicle traffic to the neighborhood. That's generally the reason we have them.
Yeah, so I'd like to see that, because I think it gets back down to the intent of the law. I'd like to see what that is. I could find it. So, I'd like to consult with you.
Okay, Dave, do you have all the changes?
We've got or. Kurt, you talked about the utility trailer, we want to have any, do you want to change this?
Well, we discussed the 6-foot height, basically in reference to these trailers that are lawnmower-type trailers, of taking it down to 4 feet, which adds kind of like another restriction on allowing them to do that, so. That was just a conversation. I noticed you didn't pick up on that.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, hey, anybody wants to leave it at 6 or move it to 4?
I would suggest the 4 feet, once again.
I'd get 4. 4 feet in average height.
Right.
And then, what I've indicated there, that we're getting to that section, that we used to read driveway, but my recommendation is to pull driveway out. We don't have a definition of a driveway, just leave, call it prepared service. That's how we've been defining it.
Okay.
And I think that's pretty much it.
I have one more addition. If you go on Page 7 on D, it says recreational vehicles may be parked in a driveway for a period of 24 hours, but not to exceed three times in any 30-day period for the purpose of loading and unloading the vehicle. I've talked to Bob Brumfield about this years ago, and like I said, we've had many nose-to-nose conversations about getting stuff done, and he said, here's what the people do. He says, you cite them, let them know that their trailer is parked illegally. So, he says he starts a process, and it takes roughly 30 days to go through the whole process. So, he says, what do they do? And in about 10 days, they move the trailer and park it in their neighbor's driveway for a day. Well, then he move it back, and the process starts all over again. So, I'm suggesting we take the 30-day period and change it to 60 days. So, it's not so easy for them to just play the game here, move in a trailer for a day and move it a bag, move it, you know. So, if you make it 60 days, it just makes it a little more restrictive in terms of how they can play the game, necessarily.
I think that's a good idea.
Omar?
That's fine.
Okay.
But I do have a question after.
Okay, go ahead, Omar.
And Tanya responded to me on Page 3, and I brought this question up at the last meeting. One of the things was under structures. Structures meaning in combination materials, whether fixed or portable, forming a construction, including buildings. At that time, I asked, does that refer to sheds as well? Okay? And you said you were going to discuss it today to give me a little clarification on that.
That's one of our fantastic lawyer definitions right there.
Right.
That's structure, so it's basically designed to encompass pretty much anything. So, and like I said, that's how the county code reads it, well, if you want to build a structure, you got to get a permit. And so, that's basically, if they decide to, you go out, like I say, if you go tie two sticks together in your front yard, you're automatically building a structure, and you need permits to do it. So, but, yeah, as far as that definition goes, that's pretty much going to encompass anything, any sort of building, whether it be permanent structure, temporary structure, you know, when you set up a tent in your backyard, you've erected a structure under this definition.
So, basically, you're saying sheds are not, would not be allowed?
No, well, they're considered, they would be considered a structure.
They're considered a structure.
Should we add in there a line of saying permits are required for building a structure,[1749.16] Which would basically.
That's all handled through the county.
Yeah, but somebody goes and buys a shed and they haul it and put it on their yard. There's no permitting. Nobody knows anything about it until the shed arrives. And so I'm saying if you maybe have it in there where you have to go get a permit to even buy a shed, that kind of stops the process right there. Does that make any sense or not?
Kurt, right now, when they come to us and they went for the shed, we send them back to the county and we tell them they have to have permits. Now, we don't have any, we don't have anything here at Sunning Lake that they have to do a permit through us. So there are questions a lot of times, you know, why don't we have that? But right now, we send it back to the county.
Well, I'm concerned about the guy on Pebble Beach Drive. He just moved in here, bought a house. A week later buys a shed, puts it in his backyard. There it is.
He came into our office and we told him to go to the county, which he did. He got a permit.
How can he get a permit if it says you can't have a permit?
He goes to the county, gets the permit.
So the county allows it, but?
The county allows it, not us.
What part of, because I just thought we were talking about the definition of a structure.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we eliminate the sheds?
We're trying to understand the wording here and what you're explaining or saying. You can have a tent there essentially.
What I'm saying is that this definition of structure encompasses pretty much anything that you can put up on your property. So I guess where's the part that we're trying to recognize?
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is it in here someplace? Can we put it in here if it isn't in here?
Oh, yeah. I mean, arguably, we can put in, if we want to restrict sheds, we can do that. But I don't know that that's in here now. I mean, that's, I mean, that's part of the, I mean, as far as the county building code, what you, you know, where you can, you know, where a shed can be erected or placed on a piece of property is, right now that's handled by them.
You know, I mean, somewhat self-serving here, but I think sheds, and the one that's on Pebble Beach Drive, I'll say the guy did an outstanding job. He's put some landscaping around it. It's not an eyesore by any stretch of the imagination because he maintained it. He's moving, so I don't know what's going to happen with the people move in. But there is also, it's on the golf course. And, you know, you start having these structures going up along the golf course and it really does detract from the aesthetics of the actual course itself. We've got somebody over on Magnolia right now that just put up, you know, a gazebo in the middle of a lot, you know, a pretty large one. And there's no restrictions. They have, you know, there's swing sets going up. There's trampolines out there. I mean, I thought all of these things were not allowed. So I would like to put some kind of constraints so that at least we get some level of control over this. If you don't have a homeowners association, that, see, a homeowner's at least can put that in, their deed restrictions. And then it's up to the homeowners association to obviously enforce that. But I would like to have at least a district-wide policy that says, you know, certain things they can do or they can't do. Because it'll get out of control. I've seen it. A lot of properties have slowly, fences are creeping into different areas and they, and, you know, this guy says, well, he put a fence up, I can put a fence up and so on. So we need to kind of put a little bit of control on it. I would suggest we put something in here that essentially eliminates those types of structures, tents, the one.
Would it be better in the deed restrictions that you're working on? Or is it better in this document?
Well, I mean, we could, in my opinion, it's going to be better in the deed restriction portion because that's what we're talking about doing is restricting what people can do on their property. Because this, this, if we put it in here, it wouldn't stop, it wouldn't stop that we're doing. It would just be able to find.
Okay.
You know, we want to, if you want to completely eliminate it, you know, if that, if we put it under the deed restriction section, then arguably we could potentially put a lien on the property if they don't, if they're not complying. To say that what they want to put out there is not allowed, you're not allowed to have that there. We remove it.
Okay.
This would just give us the ability to find them.
I'd rather have it in the deed restriction.
I would too, based on what Kurt just said, yeah.
So no one, so if that does go through, then anyone with a shed in the district will have to remove it?
No, it'd be grandfathered.
It would be grandfathered.
They will be grandfathered in that case.
But you wouldn't get any more. That's the only point. It would stop.
Or an existing structure, it'd be grandfathered. For temporary structures, they can be forced to remove.
So that would be a separate under the deed restrictions, okay?
Now, let me ask you something, just as a backup to that. So when I buy a house and move into Sunning Lake, I always, district office, people do, come over there and get the information, so can they be culled in? This is in your deed? Or this is, you can't put structures outside your house, something like that?
Well, that eventually will be, once it's, once we've got it finalized, it'll be part of, it'll be recorded, part of the public record, part on the books. In fact, instructor notice that they need, you know, remember, just because you don't know a law, it doesn't mean you can't break it. So, yeah, my recommendation would absolutely put people on notice. So I don't know if they've ever ready to remember. It's back a year ago, the house across the street from middle school that had the wall, it was right up against the sidewalk and it's been torn down. And that's, and that's, when something's in the deed, when it's a deed restriction, you can go in and remove something that is not compliant.
Okay. I'll put it in your notes then.
Now, how long would it take for Macbeth to get back to us on these changes?
We're, at this point, what we're doing, we're seeing this, and this is now a request to VOCC. So technically, what it, it'll, in my opinion, it'll get put on the agenda. If Mr. Macbeth doesn't like any of these changes, he can advise the county that, you know, this was, they deviated from what I recommended. But still, it's, that would just be his recommendation. This will be going on the agenda.
I just don't know, another year or so.
Well, let's vote to approve this, anyway. That'll help.
Yeah, that's right. He's smoking his own.
I think that's it. So now we just need to vote on this document as well.
I think I'm going to allow briefly public comment if there is any. I knew it.
Good morning again. I want to congratulate Kurt for really working on this code enforcement. He's been on that for many years. I'm glad it's finally coming to some kind of head because really, it's so ambiguous and it's not being enforced. And like the problem we have on Pebble Beach Drive where a guy just built a house, put a shed up, went to the county. County says, well, you have no restrictions. Well, we do. So finally, we're going to have some teeth in some kind of perhaps fines and liens and everything else. The question is, all right, now you get a hawnic that just built a home, five or six homes, and he put a fence right beside his house, which really is, it's not the color of the house. It's more than six feet high. And you just say to yourself, how can this, how can this happen? I mean, these builders have got to have it in their deed so that you have a restriction as far as fences, gazebos and sheds. So I'm glad the board here is working on this and I hope it's enforced. Because we've had problems before, not being enforced because, well, you don't have a code restriction, blah, blah, blah. Okay. The other question is, which I don't know if you brought this up or not, about the size of the house. Kurt has brought this up before, about the minimum size, maximum size. And we just don't want to have something that's got 700 square feet.
That would be in the deed restrictions which he's working on right now.
Okay, so that is being looked at.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Joe Branson, resident. I have a question on the shed thing. Aren't parts of Sunning Lakes restricted and parts of it not? Is that, and are we talking about changing that?
Well, there are certain parts that have that, are governed by HOA. And the HOA's can have more restrictive rules than the actual.
Or less.
Sunning Lake itself. You can't have less.
Can't have less.
You don't have more.
Okay. But technically, no place in Sunning Lakes, can you put up a shed?
I don't know that that's not allowed. Because I think that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, okay. But then if there's going to be areas that are restricted and areas that are not, is the county going to know what those are when people go in and ask for a permit?
Correct, because that's going to be part of the book.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I mean, the second piece is on the clearing of the lots and the mowing. What's that enforcement going to look like? Are they going to follow the Mike's people? Is the sheriff or the county going to be involved in it?
Code enforcement, I assume.
Yeah, yes.
I mean, I'm particularly interested in the two lots to the north of me, which is woods. I understand it's owned by some people from South America. That encroaches on my property by as much as 23 feet near as I can tell. I can't drive a car between my house and that woods and open the doors and get out there.
I think under, you can cut anything that's on your property.
I don't have the kind of equipment it would take to do that. I mean, I bought the place two years ago and the problem was already there. I mean, it would take some serious equipment to trim that back to.
Try some roundup.
I can afford to have much roundup. You'd be talking 55-gallon drums.
I don't know.
I mean, is there, is that part of what we're talking about? Are they going to be obliged to do anything with that?
No, sir. It does not apply to lots that are woods, like wooded lots. The grass height only applies to lots that are cleared.
Okay.
So the wooded lots will, it's going to be, it's not part of these minimum maintenance.
Because when the wildfire conversation was going on, I mean, that thing's nine feet from my house at some points, I'd be toast.
Yeah.
And that's a prime candidate for a wildfire when it's like it was last winter, so. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Pat Holmes, resident. On the length of the boats, 12-foot, that's a John boat. There are many people that have 16, 18-foot fishing boats that are much nicer looking and have covers on them than a John boat at 12-foot. So I would reconsider the length of the boat.
Anybody else?
Good morning. Mark Martin, 2328 Sunrise Drive. I believe each of you received an email from me, did you not? I know Mr. Camp responded, which I really appreciate it. And of course, I'm here regarding the ongoing problem with my neighbor at 2400 Sunrise Drive. This house is, I know many of you are familiar with it. This has gone on for years now. I cannot get any satisfaction through our homeowners association. I'm actually on the architectural committee. But in Manor Hill, we just don't have the funds to litigate or anything. So I'm asking with the new revisions, that somehow something be written in. If you can dictate the length of grass and the size of a boat, can you not dictate to owners that they trim their, that they have some type of a landscape design, trim their hedges, trim their palm trees on a regular basis, not once every four or five years, and just make an effort to clean up their yard? I mean, this thing seriously impacts my property value. And, you know, it's a concern. It's a problem. I think if you went out and looked at the property, and I know some of you have, I know Mike's familiar with it, you would understand my frustration with it. And I'm encouraging you and I'm asking you to please write something in the revision that will take care of these problems, not only for my neighbor, but other problems like that.
Let me ask you something in that vein of what Mark's saying here. Is there some type of general statement that we could make and put in the code enforcement that will give Mike the authority to go tell those people, look what, you can't have your house in this decor. You need to straighten it up if we don't, that's not, you know, it'd just be a Joe Collins that he, that Mike could use, you know, mark out. Can we have something like that in there? I mean, if there's nothing in there, those people are going to keep that the way it is.
Wally, we've been over that house that Mark's talking about and I agree with Mark.
Oh, I know what you mean.
He just, the homeowner just, just does not keep his yard very well. But he's own, he owns other property here at Sunning Lake that we cited and stuff. And Mark's right, he doesn't trim his bushes, but we can't make him. We can't make a guy trim his trees or his bushes, you know? And I don't know what we can put in there to make someone. I mean, I think it's actually impossible, but I don't, I mean, I've been to his house many times for animals and trash. And I've told him point blank, clean it up. He cleans it up for a couple of weeks and then it's back to the same thing. So I mean, I mean, I don't know if there's anything we can do. You're going to tell me.
As far as, like I said, because now you're talking about aesthetics. I mean, people can't have debris, broken out vehicles, you know, stuff like that in their yard. So absolutely you can stop that. But when you're saying now, I don't like the way your tree looks. I don't like the way your bushes look, you know? I don't know that we have any restrictions here. Someone could paint their house, you know, pink or, you know, bright blue or neon yellow if they wanted to.
I would say Manor Hill would be the best approach.
It needs to be led up to the homeowners associations. I mean, that's a restriction.
I went and visited your property, by the way, and I agree. I wouldn't want it next to me either. But I didn't really see any code per se violations. I mean, his shrubs were higher than I'd like and, but it wasn't.
Well.
That was the problem. I mean, how do you say, okay, I want your shrubs at three feet and I want them square? I mean, how do you tell people that you can't?
I'm just saying, you know, these dead palm fronds have been on there for years. I mean, not just three months or six months. These have been on there for, he doesn't trim them. They eventually, after several years, will fall down and lay in the yard. But again, I just can't see, if you can dictate the length of someone's grass, can't, you know, can't we dictate or can't we ask or, you know, negotiate with this individual to please do something?
Personally, I think your best avenue is the HOA and put some more teeth in your HOA restrictions.
Yeah, and because in all honesty, this, all of this stuff that you posed, we're talking about, these are how to care and maintenance damage are. The general rule is the reason you don't want to have high grass because, you know, snakes and rats and stuff live in high grass. And that's, you know, that's a reason that we have, that we have, you know, valid purposes that we're maintaining the health of the community by, you know, preventing vermin from having a place to habitat.
Well, and they live in bushes too. I've had, I've had three coral snakes around my house in just the past year. So, you know.
Well, Mark, I think all of us have looked at it. And I feel bad for you. But I, and I talked to Tanya about it and I don't think there's anything.
What if this house was next to you? What would you do?
Same thing you're doing.
Okay.
Complain.
Complain. But that's, but I've asked, I think we've all asked, there's just nothing we can do as a board of supervisors in Sunning Lake.
Actually, I do have a house not next to me, but two over, exactly the same thing. Never trims their trees, bushes, their, everything's overgrown.
But, you know, this is, this is, this is a golffront property. I mean, doesn't the, as board members, do you care how this looks from the golf course? And I'm not exaggerating when I have golfers stop by and ask, how is this allowed?
I understand.
You know?
But don't think we don't agree with you, but we're just, I think you've probably been told more than one time that there's nothing we can do. And we can't, or we would, Mark.
All right.
It's simply an HOA.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. Anybody else? Hey, Chrissy.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Pat O'Heans?
None.
Petitions and Communications?
None.
Stafford Force. Who's first?
Jim Kurtzborn, General Manager, Sunning Lake Golf Club. Just a couple of updates on the club. Turtle Run opens today, reopens after a closing. It's in, it's in really good shape with the exception of our, we had an irrigation issue that affected five, six and number seven green on Turtle. Five and six are recovering nice, or five and seven are recovering nicely, but six is going to take more time. We've actually taken a walking mower, which is the least intrusive mower that you can have. It does the least amount of mechanical wear to a green. And we're setting up that mower with a higher height to help that number six green come back, just so you're aware of that. Deer Run closes on Monday to be airified. We're also going to tear up, or we're scheduled to tear up, and I don't like that word, dig up the front of number 17, a large area in front of 17 to try to get to the bottom of understanding that wetness. We believe it's a soil situation, so we plan on taking the soil out and replacing it with good soil and a sand topping. But we'll know more once we get into it. You've probably noticed that we've been working diligently on the range, especially the floor of the range. of the range, so the, the whole appearance of the range has gotten much improved, and we expect to continue to do that. We're starting next week, we'll put our second round of growth retardants on, on the roughs, so from the edge of the fairway to thirty yards into the rough. We're using a growth retardant that actually slows down the growth of the rough, so we can try to make it from one week to the next, cause we do realize that the challenge that that creates for the, for the golfers. We're rededicating ourselves to the front of the clubhouse and expect to see that area improve quite a bit over the next month. You know, we're considering changing the grass in front of the clubhouse, but one of the problems, just to be direct, is Bermuda's really hard to kill, so when you put in, you know, to change to another grass, like a Zoysia grass, which is, probably would be our choice, it's difficult, cause you establish a Zoysia and then the Bermuda keeps growing up through it. So, we're gonna give it our best effort the next month. We think we can bring the Bermuda back, we're gonna then overseed it and make it look really good for the season, and then evaluate, you know, next year, but that area definitely is unacceptable. Last night in the club, we had a, a member night for twenty-five off, it was great, the members came out and brought lots of guests, we had over a hundred people, which is more than double our usual traffic. We're gonna schedule that again in August and September, and we've actually gone, in August, on Tuesday and Wednesday, we're going to do some nine ninety-five specials with a couple new items, non-menu items, to try to, you know, shake things up, cause we realize the, the people that are really great customers, you know, look at the same menu a lot in the summer, so trying to do something to make that a little bit better. I'll be submitting the results of the survey for distribution to the membership at the end of this week, so they should be distributed next week. The responses have been, you know, extremely positive, I don't think there was one area on the survey that I could find when I referenced our two thousand sixteen survey and our two thousand thirteen survey. I didn't find one area that I could see that wasn't improved. The golf course was hugely improved, the members. And beyond that, I'd just like to thank Tanya for all her help with, I have a lot of priorities, and she's definitely a big benefit in helping me do those and analyze those, so. Are there any questions about the golf operation or F and B operation?
I got a question for you. You know, this, this grass around the clubhouse, it's, you know, we go through this two-year cycle, we, we rip it all out, we plant it, two years later, the weeds have taken over, we rip it all out, we replant it, same thing, we've been doing that for like eight years now. So, I'm told, I was told previously that the problem is the irrigation. So, I didn't hear anything in your comments about irrigation, and also didn't, I see in the budget, you've taken out ten thousand dollars for clubhouse irrigation, so are you fixing the problem or not fixing the problem?
Originally, we were told, you know, I was told when I got here that it was the irrigation, when we analyzed it a month ago, it's, in our mind, it's not an irrigation problem, there's five hundred or a thousand dollars, you know, in heads and adjustments, but it's not a capital irrigation problem. You know, we're, like with the range, and I, I think I addressed the clubhouse out of priority, you know, in other words, I would have liked to, in retrospect, having addressed it sooner, but to me, the clubhouse is just like the driving range, if you don't water it and check that you water it and fertilize it and manicure it and do all those things, you know, then you get the product that we got. You know, we, we were told that it was nematodes, and our nematode counts don't come back, that it represents nematodes, so I apologize for the condition of it, but I guarantee you in sixty days, it's gonna be remarkably better, and a year from now, it will be, so hold me to it, but...
Oh, I will.
You know it, but thanks for asking.
I'm more concerned about two years from now, that we don't go through the same cycle again, that's my issue.
You were not gonna go through that cycle.
Okay.
Mark?
Actually, Kurt touched upon one of my concerns. I happened to attend last night, I thought it was very good, and I'm glad to see that you're going to do some additional nights. I might make a suggestion that we do some of these maybe in November or December timeframe, I'm not saying a lot, maybe one, because a lot of our friends from north or other parts of the states here, they always see these specials, and they say, how come when we get down there, we don't have that opportunity to attend one of these? I realize it hits some revenue maybe, but at the same token, I think it's a good touch. The other thing is, I have received, and I'd like to get if possible, if this is the appropriate time, to get a little bit of an update from Green Room as to where we are with the, I, I thought we were getting a part that they located for the TVs and the audio system in the, in the clubhouse. I haven't seen any change there yet, so I'm just curious, just if you could give us an update on that.
Well, the, and I need to double check this, because I'm not, I'm probably not on top of this or understand this as well as I should. My understanding is, when the lightning hit and the part fried, we didn't have the ability to play all the channels or play music with, with certain channels, so replacing that part let us do that combination, but it didn't, it didn't fix the, the wave line or the burn line or, or the, the problems that we had going into it. So, it, it basically, you know, on our capital, we had the outstanding capital suggested for the upgrade for next year in our books, and so what Green Room came in and did was just a temporary fix, it was a three hundred dollar part that they put back to get us back to where we were. An interesting part of it, and I guess, and Omar can speak to this, I'm not sure exactly how we're gonna handle it, but when Green Room came in and analyzed that lightning strike, what they said was that it, it fried our stuff, and our stuff is obsolete, and for us to repair it, this is what we have to do. And it's my understanding from talking to Omar, that our insurance company, when they got that, actually wrote us a check for...
Like over sixteen thousand dollars?
For over sixteen thousand dollars, so that was something that was gonna be covered today, so we can take the next step to actually upgrade our equipment, to have everything in there functioning properly. So, so all this was, was a Band-Aid that Green Room did, but in, in the time, I mean, literally, they were here on, you know, Friday a week ago, and I think this check showed up on Monday, I don't, we didn't have any idea. If we would have known that they were sending us this check, we would have, you know, probably waited and tried to do everything at once, but literally, it, you know, so right now, I think it's just us going through the logical process, you know, of, of getting enough bids and making sure so we can get this fixed, you know, the way it should be.
Oh, good. I, I appreciate the update, so what you're telling me is the twenty, I think it's twenty thousand dollars that you're looking to put into, in the budget for this, will be covered now, at least sixteen thousand of that will be covered through the insurance reimbursement that we've received, so we can take that twenty thousand out or at least sixteen of it, correct?
Correct. Yeah. And the best news is, is we're, you know, they tell us they're installing the best suppression system that we can get, you know, for the lightning, so, you know, we went from, his words, where we went from a two hundred dollar system to a thousand dollar system, so it is hard to block all that lightning, but, you know, we're budgeting the best suppression system we can get.
Great, that's good news. That's all I have.
We're gonna address other stuff during the workshop, right?
Right.
Yep, okay. Who's next? Oh, do we have public comment after each one? I don't think we do, right? We'll get you though, we'll get you. Go ahead, Tanya.
Good morning, Tanya Dury Smith, Community Services Director. Just wanted to touch base on a couple of things. Camp, summer camp is coming to an end, we have two weeks left until the kids go back to school, so everything's gone very smoothly, it's been a great summer with them. We've averaged between thirty-eight and forty-two kids per week, which has definitely been our highest attended summer so far. In front of you, I've, I've left a, a picture of a pink fire hydrant. Some of you may recall, last year, Florida Hospital approached us with bringing this project to Sunning Lake, they, it's been three, almost three years ago, they did it in downtown Sebring, the event's called Extinguish Breast Cancer. They have, last year, we mapped out fifty-two fire hydrants in the district, mostly along Sunning Lake Boulevard, in front of the golf club here, and also Recreation Complex, where they'll have volunteers come and paint the fire hydrants pink as, as it's shown, shown there, very nice and neat, and, and it'll be a great touch for our community, I believe. The event, right now, is scheduled for October first, and they've assured me that this year it's going to happen. I know last year, in their planning process, something happened and they couldn't pull it off, so, but this year, they've, they've gotten their act together, and it's definitely gonna happen October first, which is a Sunday, so it should be a very smooth, smooth process, especially for us, and we hope to have a lot of community involvement as well, and we'll help them promote volunteers through our newsletter, as long as the board is, is okay with moving forward and allowing them to come in and do that.
Are all the hydrants exactly the same, or are there variations of it?
The picture, yeah, they'll, they will all look the same, yes, so I'll have a template to go by, if there's any on the con, like laid on concrete, which my, my colleague does not believe there is any, but they will also make sure that there's a pad put down so that there's no paint that gets put on the, on the sidewalk or wherever the, the fire hydrant is.
So, what, this is a no-cost thing for us, right?
Right, it's, yeah, it does not cost us anything at all. I know last year, they, they approached us, they sent a letter, and I haven't received a letter, cause I just met with them this week, asking for the community center fees to be waived, and I believe last year, the board approved to do that for them. I know that they're going to submit a letter, but I haven't received it yet, so I don't wanna, you know, speak too much of that, but I may be bringing that to the next, to the next meeting for them. But they have paid and reserved, and just to make sure it's, it's set and ready to go for them to, to move forward with their planning process.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Or, did you wanna talk about this, or is that just for us?
Um, it was just a, a rough draft.
And you're correct at what we've done, right?
Yes, yeah, the, the corrections, once the county commissioner has sealed the deal, we'll definitely, and then we'll print them en masse, so the residents can have access to them.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question about this. Right now, you've got basically the five most common violations, but would it make any sense to have a, a, like a one-line bullet things of other violations that are possible, or, so that people would just be aware, maybe it wouldn't explain the issue, but just make them aware that, you know, it's illegal to, do we have, like, for example, park your boat? Or something like that?
I mean, I can certainly adjust it somewhat, we have reference in a couple of places where they can read, where they can read all of the code enforcement as well online, so I can def, certainly look at some other ones that might be popular and reference them there.
I was just thinking of the assessment brochure that you made out, and that's just, it really doesn't explain anything, it just says, here's what you get, ding, 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 ding. Now, if you wanna know more about it, you can go find out about it, but at least, and I was kinda thinking the same way with this, is that if you just had all these different violations listed, if it hits you personally, then you're gonna go find out about it and not really have it explained to you like this. I'm saying this is good, but, just an idea.
So, you, you would prefer to simplify it like we did for the assessment?
No, this is fine, but I'm just saying, within this...
Try to find a place just to...
You know, maybe make this a little bit smaller or something, just have some bullet points on the back of other violations.
Okay, can certainly make those changes.
Well, I'm not saying to do it, I'm just offering an idea.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll...
I'm glad I got that authority, now I know I can...
We could have a section just say, other common or other possible violations.
And maybe it don't make any sense.
It's hard to bullet point these violations, that is one thing we looked at, and it's, it's much harder than the assessment, so we might have to elaborate a little bit, but yeah, we can certainly look at it.
Is, is, guys, are you, you know, I hate to have you do all this and then you get voted, gets voted, and that happens so many times, you do stuff, or everybody does stuff, and it's not even come to, are you okay with trying to look at something like that with the rest of you?
Yeah, I am, I, I mean, I just started this morning, so I'd like to review it a little and kind of do some of, some of the ideas, and maybe incorporate this as well as some bullet, bulleted items as to...
Very good.
The major violations, and then people can then check it out.
Okay, thank you. Who's next? Omar, Mike?
Nothing. I got a few things that I wanna, just the projects we're working on, and having a summer help this year has been unbelievable for help for us, for me. I feel we saved a lot of money with the summer help, because we went in, we did a lot of clearing, we did a lot of stuff in the maintenance areas, we did a lot of stuff in the, the water, the sewer plants, and having the extra help has been unbelievable, and I want to thank Tanya for that. I did meet with the college, and the college is going to work with a program to send a student, or not student yet, but to work with students, to work with us, and they will actually help pay their salaries, so right now, that's where we are with that. But having the summer help and having the extra kids here, or not kids, there are, you know, we have grownups, but has been unbelievable with the work that we've got done. I mean, believe me, I'm not even close to what I wanted to get done, but we've got, what have been done this year?
Well, let me ask you something, Mike. I, I see what you've done, I think what you guys did out here on the entrance, cut the edge and that, it's wonderful.
Ton of work.
But I, talking with you and talking with a couple of those guys, there's still a lot of work that can be done. Is there any way that we can keep them on? We have money, that we can have him keep some guys on, those people want, to get these things done?
Well, Wally, one of the kids is going back to school the third week in August, and then there's only one more I could, the college will be paying for one, but there is one that's willing to stay as long as we can keep him, and I mean, he's a great worker. I mean, George hasn't had any problems with anything they have done for us, so...
You're asking maybe one person?
One, well, if I could, well, I don't know, Tanya's gonna probably shoot me if I ask this again, but...
We can look at it internally, we're gonna look at it internally.
But I would like to try to keep them, at least till September, the first of September, two of them.
Well, I see what they're doing, but the aesthetics of the place, this whole place has been tremendous, and you never see this guy standing around?
No, absolutely, and I've never even driven out and even, you know, I mean, I hadn't, you know, there were a couple of them, I had to give them hell about their cell phones that keep the cell phones in the car when they come to work, but that's basically everything I've had, but that's, today, in today's world, that's typical, I think.
Thank you, Mike, and I, I think just, I'm sure you're gonna work with Tanya and keep us informed, cause if, if we can do it, we, it's a good idea to keep some more help, if they're good.
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's one of the things with Mike, since he's doing, can I have a second?
Yeah.
We had talked probably six months ago about possibly getting a painter to paint the lines and...
Right, well, as a matter of fact, that was one of the projects that I wanted to get to. We bought a paint machine.
Good.
Beautiful paint machine, but what happened was, the first day we went to use it, it was bad, so we had to send it back, we had, and take, took about three, three or four weeks to get it, and then, of course, the rain, it rained, but, but that's actually on my radar to start, it was supposed to start next week, we're gonna start over here on Edgewater, where the golfers come off the course, that's where we're gonna be starting for next week. So, that's, you know, and, and actually, that, that's one of the people that I designated to work with, actually, Chewie, will be running it, but I was gonna put a summer help with him.
Okay.
And I'm trying to train him to understand that, you know, this, this isn't a one-shot deal, we gotta do this, do these things every year, you know, and it's really, you know, starting to kick in, so I'm real happy with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
General Counsel report?
I was looking at the, as far as litigation goes, Ayala, looking at the online docket just this morning, and there's some interesting stuff on there, from, based on my review of it, it looks like that, I told you at the last meeting, that they had, that the opposing counsel has filed a counter appeal to try and undo the, the partial dismissal that we got. It looks like he's withdrawn that, but he's also requested an extension to respond to our appeal, that basically is asking that all of the counts be dismissed. That was at the end of June, he requested that, so he's probably got at least a thirty, if not a sixty-day extension to, to reply to, to our counsel's appeal. I'm gonna do, I'm gonna call Mr. Roper next week and see if I can get some, you know, more details about that, cause as far as paperwork goes, I have not seen anything. Foreclosures have been going pretty well, I know we've got at least one or two payoffs, and I wanted to ask Omar, we had talked about, I had gotten a call, I believe, two weeks ago, from the owner or the coun... I had gotten a call, I believe, two weeks ago from the owner or the council for the assisted living facility over here that owes a lot of money. Did we ever get any of that money?
We have not received it this week, no.
All right, so I'm going to get back on the phone there. He had promised that he was going to send up, I believe, over $70,000 to bring 2015 current and then request a payment plan to pay off 2016. Any communication from him at all?
I'll touch base this week.
No problem.
That's around 160, isn't it?
170.
Something like that.
170, yeah.
Okay. So, hopefully, you know, we'll be seeing some of that money soon because he's, I think he finally understands that foreclosure is not far off if he doesn't come into compliance.
Good.
That's good.
General managers report?
Just a few announcements. August 25th, we're going to have the public hearing for the golf rates and finalize, and try to finalize any changes that we have to the budget. September 8th will be the tentative budget adoption and then September 22nd will be the final adoption process for the '17, '18 fiscal year. Just a couple of other updates on the projects. The district roof should be finished by next week. We don't have final confirmation just yet, but it's coming along very smoothly, so we're looking maybe by the end of next week.
By next Friday, we hope. They said it was going to be this Friday, but we kind of knew it was going to be a week.
The maintenance facility is moving forward. I believe the drywall is finished, the tile for the offices have been delivered.
A start had been, they're actually putting it down.
So, we're still on track for the mid to the end of September completion date on that project. Mike, back in June, Mike Curley and I had an appointment with Sheriff Blackman to discuss the traffic concerns and the speeding concerns in the district. We also met with Captain Johnson and the sheriff will be stepping up his patrol here in the district.
They have, they started.
And so, he's noticed that already, so we think that was a good meeting with the sheriff's office. The electronic billboard bid opening date is August 8th, so we'll be bringing that to you August 25th for discussion. The Trimax pull behind attachment for cutting the roughs, the bid opening is August 15th and we will be bringing that to you on August 25th for bid award. And just a couple of other things on the...
Tanya, what was that?
Which one?
The rough mower.
The rough mower. Or it's a pull behind attachment.
It's the pull behind, yeah.
The bid opening is August 15th. We're going to bring that to you, to the board meeting on August 25th for discussion and bid award. And the last thing, we, we received, you know, final confirmation from the county this week on the insurance rates, about what the rates are going to be. So, we did a little bit of work internally and we're very excited to move forward with the county insurance plan and their umbrella. And we, what we did is we analyzed by employee, you know, what the effects of this new rate plan were going to be. We have two selections for coverage for health insurance. One is a base plan and one is a buy-up plan. The buy-up plan, you know, does, does cost more money to the employee as well to the district. Currently, we have in place where we pay, the district pays 85% of the employees' coverage and any spouse or dependent coverages. And so, what we did is keeping that 85% coverage, you know, for the employee, we did, we did some calculations. If, if all employees took the base plan, the district's annual savings would be 115,000. We don't expect that because it's going to be an average between the two. If everyone takes the buy-up plan, we're expecting about an $80,000 district saving. So, that's where we got the $100,000 average. We don't expect everyone to take a base plan, we don't expect everyone to take the buy-up plan. Buy-up plan is more expensive. So, in our calculations, we're recommending the district stay at the, by covering 85% of the employee and their spouse and dependents. Based on the calculations, we feel that is the best option for, for the district and for the employee. We will have some employees where their monthly cost will go up. And those eight employees are, they're more of our younger group. And the reason that their, their costs are going to go up is our, our rates were based on age before with Florida Blue, okay? The younger you are, the less you pay. Now, with the group coverage that we're going on to, everybody pays the same. So, what has happened, and the maximum that we calculate, I believe, is $49 for one person on one month. So, their, their cost for health insurance coverage is going to go up almost $50 in one month, so that's about $25 or $22 a paycheck. Unfortunately, in, in all of our scenarios, this is still the best scenario that we're looking at in total. And I had a feeling that was going to happen. It wasn't going to affect everyone the same because we were rated on age before. The older, our older employees paid more money for health insurance before and that had been going on for about three or four years. So, so we, we as a district are recommending to keep the 85% coverage for our employees and dependents.
Question I got is if the district is going to save 80,000 at the worst-case scenario, so 15% of that, so would the employees as a group save $10,000? Or does the employee rate stay the same or does it go, I know you said eight go up, but the other 30 go down?
Those are all going down. Those are going down.
Okay, good.
Yep. So, the, the rates on the county insurance that were quoted during the current year, I believe the rates went up 6%. Is that correct?
7%.
7%. So, that's a pretty, pretty big hike. So, even, even with that 7% increase, these are the numbers that we're still within, so we feel, feel good about going forward with this, so. Our open enrollment for our employees is August 4th. We're going to be meeting here at the clubhouse at 8 o'clock that morning. Every employee is required to be here, I mean, if, if they can, but that's where we're going to talk about the insurance plans and what the benefit options are for the employees.
Okay, thank you.
So, you're just saying that the contributions as far as the employee, employer part will be remained exactly the same across the board?
Yes, we, we did about five different scenarios and we feel that this is the best scenario for the district, yes.
Thank you.
Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee report?
No reports.
Public comment?
Mr. Brooks.
Ray Brooks, resident. I guess my question is, and I think I saw an email on this, that on Turtle, we're going to be doing winter rules. But my question is, we have two golf courses. Why are we opening one that we have to play winter rules on? I mean, I just don't understand what's going on with the golf courses. I know we had a schedule, but if the schedule's got to be changed, it should be changed. I think to play on one course that we know we have to play winter rules on is suspect. Thank you.
They, just without asking Jim, Ray, I, I think maybe they're scheduled to do some work on deer, maybe, and that's why they got to close it.
All, all I'm saying is, we have two courses. Open up one and ask us to play winter wings on it.
We'll let Jim explain it, but I think that might be the rule because if, if we have stuff scheduled.
For deer run.
For deer run, you have to close it, I would think.
What's scheduled? I mean, that's the, that can't be changed.
Sure. Well, to answer your question, in the past, we haven't verticut the fairways, which is a, you know, a practice of the better clubs that increase your fairway, you know, density. Basically, any club, no matter what the level of the club you would have, even with 36 holes, is going to open their golf course in the summer to winter rules. So, the only way you wouldn't be doing this is if you didn't verticut and then you'd end up with a less of a fairway product, so.
I understand that, but you didn't, I mean, to be a lawyer, you didn't answer the question.
Well, basically, what I...
The question, the question is, I understand you verticut Turtle, that's fine, but why do we not keep it closed until it was ready to open? So, what's happening on deer that prohibits us from doing that?
I get, the way I would answer that, I can give you a full answer in the fact that this is a common practice for proper golf course maintenance. If we want, if our goal was to always have the courses pristine when we reopen them, we're going to pay a price of our product for the six months that it goes dormant. So, there's a balance between how much work you do on the golf course now, how much you hit the gym, has to do with how much muscles you have next year. So, the thing is, is we can forego verticutting and then your fairways aren't going to be as good, but the summer isn't long enough to always have the courses be pristine every time you reopen them.
Mike, Mike. Jim, I think what he's asking you, what he's asking you is, what are you going to do on deer?
We're going to verticut.
Okay, that's what he's trying to do.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Plus, you're going to work on 17, you're going to dig that up.
Right. But, so we closed the first time we aerified and the aerification took three weeks to heal and now we're going to close again and verticut and that's going to take three to four weeks to heal. And so, if you closed your courses that whole time, you know, that would be taking up the whole summer.
Yeah, the short and skinny of it is, Ray, that they're going to be doing so much work on deer that it won't be playable and that's why we have to go to Turtle, which may not be quite ready. This one's going to be not ready. That, that's the short and skinny of the whole deal. It's, it's going to be worked on. I mean, if it happens all, I mean, you've got to go back and forth. When is it going to be ready? You've got to tell me October or November.
Right, no.
No, he was just saying, three to four weeks?
I think the best answer is if you can go out and see Turtle, my expectation is to, when you hit it in the fairway, is to get a perfect lie all the time. We could easily not be playing winter rules now, but we, we matawayed our collars and we verticut the fairways, the fair, let's just look at it and see if it's as big a deal as, as it appears.
You know, on, on Turtle number two, the green that even though you put a drain in there, a French drain or whatever it is, it's still wet there. Can, can you look at that when you're looking at 17 as well?
Deer.
Yeah.
I think I can answer that, they're going to...
We, yes, we have problems on 2, 4, 6, and 17. And so, we, we put the drain in too, but it really didn't, you know, it didn't do the fix that we need. So, we're, you know, we're trying to work our way through kind of one at a time.
Okay. So, it's on your schedule then?
Most definitely.
217, Ray.
Okay.
Bill Norrester, resident. As a added addendum to what Ray has brought up too, is the fairways haven't been done for, since 2012 and really, really, I do appreciate the work being done as far as aerifying the fairways and, because it does enhance the fairway condition. It usually takes about a month for it to come back as a, so you can play it down. Also, the, the condition of the fairways is a, is a big deal when you do curfew because if the condition of the fairways aren't good, the curfew process really tears it up. So, I appreciate the additional work and on the fairways so they are much better, solid, they're stronger, grass is better. Okay, a quick couple of things I'd like to ask, a lightning round, you would do that on TV. All right, maybe I can have a quick answer too. Schumacher, the paving, is that a dead issue now?
Yes.
Dead issue, you're not going to do it, you're not going to give the county the money?
Correct, right.
Okay, fine, all right. The fire and ambulance service on the buildings being construction now, constructed now on Sunlight Boulevard, does that affect our insurance? Because years ago, people would say, if you live near a hydrant, your, your insurance would be a little bit less. They calculate the distance between your house and the fire department and that sort of thing like that. Is there any change up and down because we're going to have a fire department closer to our structures?
I'll tell you what, I'm waiting for Jessica to get back in touch with me about that. I thought about that with my insurance person at Allstate down here. Since they are building that, how's that going to affect my insurance, just what you're talking about? But I haven't heard back from her, I just thought about that a couple of days ago. So, I'll tell you first.
I think about it all the time.
Yeah. You're smarter than I am, I just thought about it.
It'll depend on the insurance company, so feel free to call your homeowners. I mean, that, you know, it's all, it may, sir?
Yeah. When I first moved here, the fire department was in the district office and because we did have immediate service like that, I was told that the buildings like the fairway pines, the, the reduce, they have a reduced rate, or a lower rate because the fire department is not a volunteer thing that doesn't show up. Does that make some kind of sense?
Yep.
All right. Clock is ticking, okay. I'm all done, I thank you very much for your attention and I, I appreciate Jim's work on the golf course. Thank you again.
Any more public comment? Okay, discussion to and from the board. Kurt?
Yeah, I'd like to have a few minutes here to go over something.
Okay.
You know, when I got on the board, the reason I got on the board and I told Mr. Miller that when I would go on the board was golf courses. I wanted better golf courses and that's the reason I got on the board and, and they are better. They are better. I think everybody can see that's true. I've enjoyed doing the special projects you guys asked me to do, the RV park, there was a lot of research went into that to find out whether it was, I had to put blinders on because we had, people thought that I had a boat and an RV and a trailer and I don't. So, it wasn't a personal thing. So, I learned a long time ago, special projects and you do research, you look for facts. Facts always bring out the truth. That place will be built one of these days. It's not going to be $200,000 and stuff like that. There's going to be 42 people out there, 43, the guy on the back, just on, he's had one. So, that, that's over with. All the segments of Sun and Lake are important. I mean, we do touch so many people's lives and it's very important and it's been a big deal and it's been a great deal for me, so I appreciate that. I've served on the board for 433 days and I thank everybody for their support and so forth on that, but even the complainers, I read Psychology Today years ago that the constant complainers are only happy when they're more miserable than their friends. So, I understand people complain, that bothered me a lot. But I wanted to tell you that I have a family and I've got a son in Durham and grandchildren, daughter and so forth, and two brothers in their 70s, a sister's fighting cancer. And so, with all that being said, I plan to spend more quality of time with them. So, that being said, I'm announcing today that I'm resigning from the board immediately following this meeting. You have my resignation in the envelope there. To the board members, I just want you to remember, I'll remember you in high esteem. Sometimes people just don't understand what it is to serve on this board. It takes a lot of time. I spent more time with Mike Curley than I spent, well, I don't have a girlfriend, with anybody else. You know, going around this district and working, trying to get things settled like the dog park and things like that. And, but I, I just, it's been a pleasure to be on this board. I'm only sad to say that many people just don't realize what it is, what you guys have to go through. I will seldom be back to a meeting. In my opinion, that's inappropriate. Each of you are very capable in reaching your decisions and I have full faith in each one of you. And I wish the board, Tanya and her staff, everybody that I've worked with, have just been wonderful and all of Sun and Lake residents, wish you the very best. So, Mr. President, I have a resignation here for you, your personal account. Tanya, you have the resignation for the record and as soon as this meeting is over, we have passed the 17th one, I will not be a member of the board anymore. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Not quite know what to say, but...
Yeah, that's a stunner.
It's just family. My family's, Sun and Lake's important, but my family's much more important and it's my grandchildren, I've got a six sister and things like that that I got, I have to take care of. I got, I have to take care of.
Thank you, Wally.
Thanks, Wally.
I guess we start the budget workshop? Do I have to? I don't have to adjourn the meeting, do I?
No, we can, we can take a break or we can move right into workshop.
Let's take a five-minute break.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, it can be more direct.
Okay, Daniel, you want to start with the workshop?
Yes, we're going to open the floor with the golf discussion.
Okay.
Jim has provided the board with a memo and a few changes that he made to his budget as far as capital expense and assessment revenue. And I'll let him take the floor on explaining a few of those changes.
Great. Okay, perfect. If it would be okay, before we, before I do that, I would just like to cover a couple of capital things that are out there, if it's, if it's okay. You know, specifically, and it is coupled a little bit in this capital expense, but, you know, our irrigation situation on the golf courses is ongoing. You know, to me, we've, we've looked at having the audit and from talking to all the supervisors, I think we're in agreement, the $8,000 expense outweighs the benefit that we can get from the audit, since the audit won't tell us how long the two major components of the irrigation system will last, which is the tubing and the piping. If we got, if we got feedback on those items, then it would help us project, you know, how long that would last. But, the audit won't, won't deal with that. We did meet with Toro just a few days ago. And they are going to be giving us what I would call a final bid, along with Rainbird, will be giving us a final bid for a hydraulic upgrade that should be able to take, take care of our golf courses. And it is considerably less than, than we had thought it would be. The kitchen renovation lasts, a week ago, I met with, Kevin and I met with Edward Don rep. And Edward Don's the biggest kitchen supplier in the state of Florida. And they sent their architect or their kitchen designer out. And then yesterday on the phone, I met with Acme, who does a lot of kitchen design work for Billy Casper. And then in the afternoon, I met with CT Design that does a lot of the kitchen design work with ClubCorp. And all three of those, kind of, looking at it on their own and talking, are looking at a kitchen design that works within our current building framework to make that work without having to change the footprint. So, right now, and we're not incurring any costs with those three. They're just, at this point, they're just thumbnail sketches, you know, quick scribbles. Or, you know, now you have the computer design where, like with CT Design, you know, I did a join a meeting and we actually pulled up our plan, you know, and he put the blocks in there of this is where the hood would be and this is where the serving would be. So, that's where we are in that process. I think in the next two or three weeks, we'll most likely be coming back to the board and maybe picking one of those to look at going forward to get, you know, more design work where we might have to spend some money on that. Relative to the bar, the consensus I got from the board was, the bar really wasn't something that was in our purview to begin with. That was kind of something the architect brought in. And we're not, or at least I'm not, doing any research on any bar changes with anyone, other than we're looking at in-house out of operating, just to take the refrigerant lines of the beer taps from what I would call the east end of the bar now, also down to the west end of the bar, and replace that keg cooler there with mug coolers. And then, we'll have two functional islands of the bar, which should make us more efficient and faster and decrease, decrease wait times. So, the other things we'll get to as far as the, you know, the six-month and so forth. But, those were the big items that I wanted to just update the board as to where we stand because they're a lot of money and we're going through all the due diligence that it takes to make it through there.
Hey, Jim.
Yes, sir.
In that same note, just the other part of that project was putting under air the lanai, which I'm working on that project. And we're looking at it as putting under air the whole lanai or just half the lanai. So, I'm getting quotes based on all or half or two sections, if you will. And I've got the air conditioning quote. And again, I use the word quote loosely because it's just more of a, an estimate. What would be involved in the glass guy hasn't come back to me yet, but I would expect to have that pretty soon.
Good.
Thank you.
I had a question. That upgrade you were talking about on the sprinkler system, just quickly, what would that do? Would that improve what we already have? We don't have to buy, spend a half million dollars on the heads right now? Or, what is that upgrade?
I'll defer to Ramon. But, basically, the, the real problems that we're having now is that every part of our system doesn't run every night.
Right.
You know, because we have, we have technical problems with, with the stations.
So, this is just an upgrade to the station, the main station?
It converts the system that's out there now.
Uh-huh.
It upgrades it to the latest version.
Okay.
And we move into something that we have, you know, they have plenty of parts for. We also get warranties for it. And we're able to discard, for money values, our old system.
Yeah.
If that makes any sense.
Right. So, in other words, we don't have to put in all new heads on each nine's right now?
No.
Okay, that's all, that's all I want to know. Just make sure that one's stood that way.
Okay.
And on the kitchen, was Kevin there when those three guys were?
Kevin was there with Edward Don. He's on vacation this week.
Uh-huh.
But I've, I've talked, you know, I talked to Kevin yesterday about, you know, the plans and the different things. And we, we looked at it. You know, there's a lot of work because you, you know, you are trying to retrofit something into an area. But, yeah, he, he's with us every step of the, every step of the way.
That's cool. Thank you.
In reference to the kitchen, we had a conversation, I believe. Is this working?
Mm-hmm.
Conversation. I've, I've actually, in the past week, I've kind of, I either misunderstood or I have some conflicting information. The preliminary right now is to look at just putting in new equipment and changing the footprint in there with new equipment. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes. What, what I would say is, what they're doing in kitchens just in general, which we would be doing, is most kitchens have, that they're building now, have the fewest walls possible. And in our kitchen now, you have our kitchen area, and then you have, you know, the storage area. And right here, this, you know, bar that we don't use is a temporary bar. And then, a big storage area behind that. Almost all of them that have looked at it, and actually, every kitchen designer that looks at it, is going to gut all those walls. And then, it's just basically, can we reconfigure what we have and add some equipment in there to make it functional and to get enough out of the upgrade? Or, do we need more square footage space? And so, that's where we're at, you know, right now with those designers. With Edward Don, the first one, honestly, you know, he came in, looked at it and talked about possibly needing the bathrooms or to go backwards, or what I would say northwards. You know, Acme and CT, and I think maybe this is the fact that they work with ClubCorp and Casper, they understand the need to stay in the footprint. You know, they understand the need of how the monies are going to change if you get outside the footprint. And that, you know, you might be going beyond the budget that a lot of places can have. So, and I didn't lead them in that way at all. I mean, they just immediately went, you know, in that direction. So, if that's answering your question.
I mean, whereas we're in the budgeting process now, and we're all kind of, we were hanging on different numbers that were out there and have, of course, been eliminated. So, we will not probably do any exterior construction. We would just be taking down interior walls, is basically what you're saying, to increase the size of the footprint in there to accommodate some new equipment. Potential. I mean, we're not looking to go out through the backside and changing out all of these grease bits and all of that.
We're hoping not to do that. I mean, we're in the process now to make sure, really, you know, more, I would say more due diligence to looking into it. We, we just want to make sure, we'd like to be able to create a functioning kitchen that functions better and meets all our needs within our current footprint. And that's the avenue that we're taking now. I feel like Cliff and CMSA, you know, definitely immediately went to the, the biggest avenue or the most expensive avenue of adding a lot of square footage and creating, you know, a really huge kitchen and a, and a really large expense to go with it. An expense that was beyond, you know, even if you take out the patio and bar that they threw in, an expense that was beyond, I think, our vision when we came into the project. And so, now we're just trying to do a lot more due diligence with other kitchen designers to see their basic designs and basic flows and work with Kevin, you know, to understand, will that really, you know, help us enough with our problem to stay within our current, you know, footprint?
How comfortably do you feel that they'll be able to come back to us with some suggestions so that we can look at from a budgeting process for this year? I mean, are we, do you think we'll have that by the 25th to discuss prior to the 25th? Or, are we going to be going into September trying to maybe squeeze some extra money into this budget?
I believe the approach that we're taking, Tanya, and you can speak to this, is that we're taking this totally out of the budget. And, you know, at what point we get the information that we could possibly do a kitchen renovation, it would be added back into a budget as a budget amendment. Since we have, since we have too many questions to be answered and a tight number to be, you know, attained by August or even September. But, to answer your question, they, they understand the urgency, you know, because what I've pretty much told CT and Acme, because I, I don't, I don't think Edward Don's going to be our choice. I don't know if they're at the level of sophistication of the other two, but they're still good. I've told them, you know, we've got to have a fast timeline here, not, not to get to the final product, but we've got to start blocking off July, August, and September and planning and getting things done. And I said, you know, we really have to be looking at like a four or six-week window that we really can get a lot done. And they seem confident that they could meet that. So, they're going to be getting back to me in like a week to 10 days with these thumbnail, you know, sketches of how things lay out. And then, Tanya and Kurt and I and Kevin will, you know, meet to talk to Kevin to see that he thinks it's viable, what they're, you know, recommending. And then, we'll involve the board of going to the next step of getting, you know, more formal drawings. Because those, the drawings that the kitchen designer puts together, you know, then has, has to go to the architect and his electrical and mechanical engineers to kind of get an idea of what the building costs are going to be. So, all of them, you know, indicated in generalities without getting deep into this, that the equipment number can go down. You know, the estimate we got was 500,000 plus or minus. I, you hate to throw out numbers, but I'd say we're, you know, we're 30 to 40% below that. So, we know that number, you know, can go down and be worked. The number that's harder to get on the back end is the architectural number of mechanically, you know, even if we stay in this footprint, what's the electrical going to cost? What are the new hoods going to cost? You know, all those big projects. But, to directly answer your question, they are very positive about our timeline. But, we are, you know, it's my, you know, it's the number one priority now to stay on top of this and keep pushing them in a positive way to get as much information as we can and then get it to the board.
Yeah. And I appreciate that. Thank you for the answer. I, you know, I'm sure you, you know, my concern is, we're getting at the end of the budget process. I realize we can do an amendment to the budget at any point in time. But, and you answered the question about the equipment specifically because it was, I knew it was a loan, a half a million dollars. And I'm saying, well, if we're looking at that, we know it's somewhere upward beyond that half a million dollars. That's a pretty large, you know, amendment to the budget. And so, I'm just trying to get a little bit of a feel. So, what we can figure, you know, what are we going to do in the, in the future year? So, I appreciate your input.
No, that's a good question. And they're, they're kitchen people, so they can give us a lot more information about the kitchen and the, the equipment. And then, they segue into the architect and the other people.
Okay, thank you.
So, just going back to the memo document. So, basically, we've gone from a capital budget of 390,000 to 260,000. And that was accomplished by eliminating the scoreboard renovation. We're just going to do that out of operating this year. The irrigation upgrades to the clubhouse, because those aren't really capital. We have some work to do on it, but it's not near the, the capital mark that it would be. And also, the irrigation upgrades to the golf course. Also, we changed from a lease purchase of the rough units to purchasing one tractor and one pull-behind mower in, in next year's budget.
I got a question about that.
Yes.
When we went to the demo for that pull-behind mower, the comment was made that we have two tractors. Why are we buying another tractor?
So, the, the pull-behind that we're expecting to buy in August can be pulled by one of our tractors that we got that's a year or two old. The other two tractors, and you can add to this, Ramon, John feels like the requirements of pulling this pull-behind with those other two tractors, they're going to last like three or six months. They're not, they're not well-fit to this. So, the one, he thinks the clutching mechanism isn't going to work and will immediately burn out a clutch. And then, my memory isn't that good as to why the other tractor won't work. But, I mean, we could try those in-house tractors, but he thinks they're just going to break immediately and you're going to ruin the tractor trying to...
So, you said you have, you have one good tractor?
Well, there's one tractor now that we'll, that we'll be using for the pull-behind that we're expecting to buy on an RFP in August.
Okay.
And then...
The other two tractors, what do you use those for?
The other two tractors are used as mainly, mainly heavy equipment type work when we're aerating, when we're verticutting. So, they don't get much work, but they're clutch-driven. The operation of the pull-behind unit is better fit for a hydrostatic transmission.
Okay. Here, here's where I'm confused. And is that you're going to buy a new mower and you're going to use the good tractor for that mower. Then, the other two tractors, you're going to use those as you need it for verticutting and aerating and that kind of stuff. And you're saying those two tractors won't work for that type of equipment? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
At their age, their wear with, with the clutches?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'd say yes or no. It works or don't work, that's all.
No, it won't work.
Okay, that's what I want to hear.
Okay.
And then, also relative to the budget, the assessment revenue was decreased from 454,000 to 431,400. And that was related to decreasing the golf course maintenance labor budget, which is the allowance that we've taken out of our operating because of the benefit that we'll receive from the district getting a, a full-time mechanic. If there aren't any questions on that, then we could just go into the specific budget questions that anyone would have.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. You want to bring them up, Jim? Go ahead. You bring them up.
Sure. And then, and Omar did bring up in the capital expense. So, those were all basically decreases as you look through your capital. And we can go to page, capital in our budget is page nine. So, the, so the pergola increased $5,000. And then we had the irrigation decreases to the clubhouse and the upgrade. And then we had the change in the rough mower and the change in the tractor. And the scoreboard was eliminated. So, that's what affected our capital. We didn't have any changes, you know, to the operating, other than the fact that we have a few accounts that hadn't existed in the past that created reporting problems. So, you know, golf course maintenance, we routinely will borrow a piece of equipment here or there, like we had borrowed a airifier from the Billy Casper course in Orlando. People would drive up there and get the equipment and come back. And then you'd have that vehicle mileage expense and there wouldn't be somewhere to put it. So, we actually created that line item and then took the $500 out of it for, from equipment maintenance repair. So, it was a wash, but I didn't really think that vehicle mileage should be in equipment maintenance repair. We also supplies in F and B is a huge number of 70,000. We decreased that to 60,000 and then created a line item for equipment rental and miscellaneous. At this point, it's really not detailed how many times we, you know, rent chairs and then re-rent them to the person who's doing the wedding. And it, it looks like our expenses are increasing when that happens. And it's really more of a revenue, but my understanding is government accounting won't let you net that out and just make it a revenue. You know, it's got to be an expense that hits this line item and then a separate revenue that hits the other line item. So, we just tried to add those accounts to, to make things more trackable and more understandable. Beyond that, we just have, if there's any questions on the operating or the capital before we would get into any of the discussion on the rates.
Just a few questions. On page nine, under the capital expenses, you have, we are going to adjust that, as I discussed earlier, that's 20, that 20,000 will now probably go down to 4,000 or something, correct?
We plan on eliminating it completely. We'll just go ahead and cover all the expenses.
Cover all the expenses? Okay, thank you. The other thing is, and here again, I understand this as strictly as a guideline, with the kitchen expansion, will we still be looking to incorporate that oven and, what is it? The oven and the cooker smoker? Or would that be, do you think that's going to be part of the program for the footprint in there?
He needs it now.
Yeah, he needs it now and it will be reused. So, it's something that, you know.
That's fine. Just asking.
Perfect, yeah.
The other thing is, just a little quick update on banquets and weddings. And by the way, it was a great success story that Sonalik just received from a recent wedding party. It was nice comments. They commented the staff on the job well done, attentive to all of their particular needs. They were very thrilled with it. So, that's excellent. As far as revenue for banquets or weddings specifically, I thought or remember the number being like 60,000. Is that, is that an accurate number or am I off on that one?
No, the, the wedding number, just wedding.
Yes.
Was 60 grand for, for the 12-month period that we looked at, which is probably about four or five months ago. So, you know, every 12 months that changes a little bit, but that's about where we at for weddings.
So, I'm looking at this pergola again. And I'm saying it's roughly a third or 33% of what we, the revenue that we would bring in in a given year. I think it's nice to have. Is it a want or a need? I'm not sure. We might be, maybe should be thinking, rethinking that as to taking that out of the budget. That's, that's a pretty expensive item. And it's, like I said, it's 33% of the revenues that we take in. So, just a thought.
Holly?
Your name?
No. One other thing. I'm sorry. Are we looking, are we looking at increasing the food and beverage?
The food and beverage numbers.
Percentage wise of the meals and alcohol?
Yeah, the cost of food and beverage is budgeted to go up 3% across the board. The, the volume is budgeted to stay the same.
Okay. So, did we not have an increase this year in the last six months?
I would double check. I know the increase we had was the October that I came, so that was October of 15.
I lose, I honestly, I lose track of time sometimes. I thought recently.
No, I mean, we haven't.
Because I eat in the restaurant quite often. I thought recently the menu had gone up and, at least in food, maybe not in beverage.
I would check with Kevin. I'm, I'm aware that two or three items have been changed, but it, it wasn't an across-the-board increase.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question, just, and it's peripheral type thing. If we, there was $60,000 we took in on weddings in that 12-month period. What, what do you think we netted out, so, now that's 60? I mean, did we net half that money? Do we?
Right, well.
Do we have expenses?
Yeah. It's an interesting question. What I would say is when we're looking at the monies that come in at the end of the cycle, so, I mean, you're aware when you have a business with fixed cost and then variable cost, your, your profit comes in at the end. But I just roughly figure that half of what you bring in is profit.
Okay, thank you.
I do, would like to look at this pergola. Is that something we can talk to the board about now, about removing it or keeping it or? Because in, in my opinion, it's, it's a lot of money. It's nice if we had the money, but I'm kind of looking for $20,000 for the dog park. And it looks to me like that thing's just jumping out right at me. So, I'd like to, if we could, talk about it or see if we want to take it completely out of the budget or leave it? Can we do that?
Which, which one, the kitchen?
No, the pergola.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
The President Gilpin just made a recommendation to reallocate the 20,000 from the pergola to the dog park.
Well, we haven't had a discussion on the dog parts, so.
Correct, correct. We have not yet. That was, after we finished golf, we were going to move into the, the general fund discussion.
So, do we just have a discussion then about keeping it or doing away with it first?
We, we can talk about it when we get to the dog park if you would like to.
No, I'm not. The pergola now.
The pergola can be removed now or it can be removed before the meeting is finished?
When should we talk about it?
When should we talk about it?
Now or?
Or when we get to the.
Dog park?
When we get to the dog park if that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
You ready?
No, he's got, don't you have some rates to go over yet?
Oh, yes, yeah. Wait a minute, before you go into bed.
Ready, okay.
I was looking on page 10. And I'm comparing to this year, 2015, 2016, those are actual numbers, right? They're not budgeted numbers?
Those are actuals, correct.
You know, so you're, you're projecting that we're, we're going down in revenues, we're, we're going up in costs. Our labor is going up, our operating expenses are going down. You get into the restaurant, same kind of scenario. Revenues are going down, costs are going up, labor's going up. This doesn't look like we're doing, doing our business here or something. Or are you just hedging a little bit here?
I mean, our budgets are pretty similar year over, you know, year over year. I think the, the thing with the golf course is, is that we had a banner year as far as weather. You know, Data Tech projected that we were up 4.5% for the year, you know, based on play. And the restaurant, we should be budgeting a very similar year, year over year basis because we're, we're somewhat at the capacity of the building of trying to balance the building and, and, and our golf play. Because it's with our golfers coming in after shotguns at 5:00 and 5:30, to balance how much dinner business we can do with that, we're pretty much at the level where it's not going to grow. At least that's what we feel like with the way the, the room is set up. So, right now with our current facility, our budget is basically, unless we're able to, you know, reach a new market like the celebration of life market or something like that, or, or find a different market, for year over year, our, our budget's pretty similar. You know, we, we can always push a number like the golf number. We could always, you know, push up. Our conditioning's getting better and we're hoping to get more play from the outside, but we're also correspondingly, you know, concerned about our membership going in the other way.
Well, that's my whole point. You're confident that revenues are going down, but you're also confident that all of our costs are going up. So, that, that's not a good business scenario in my mind. I mean, you should be growing revenue faster than expenses and you're not doing it. And you're not doing it in the restaurant. And maybe you're right, maybe you're capped out, but if you're capped out, then why would your labor go up? I, I just, I can understand food costs going up, but it just doesn't make any sense to me, I guess. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong or anything.
No.
I'm just questioning it, that's all. Is, I mean, if you're comfortable with a number, you're comfortable with a number and we'll, we'll move forward. But I've just, it just looks like you're doing a lot of hedging here, that's to me.
Sure.
You're not really being all that aggressive in your budgeting process.
Well, and I, I agree, I agree on the golf side. I think the restaurant side's pretty accurate just based on how we've, how we've met the size that we can get to. But, you know, on the golf side, we, we could be more aggressive with the revenue projection.
Well, I, I don't care about the projection. I care about the performance. I mean, if you're, if you think this is the best you can do, then that's fine. I'm just asking, it looks a little weird to me, that's all. If I was investing in this business, I wouldn't, I don't think I'd be doing it.
No.
You don't have to explain it. If everybody's comfortable with it, that's fine.
No, I understand. Okay.
Just finding that I'm not that comfortable with it, that's all. All right, move on.
So, we can move on to the rates?
Yep.
Okay. So, based on last meeting, I believe we came to a consensus that for our, our basic rates, you know, meaning the full family.
I don't have.
And does everybody have a rate sheet?
No.
No, we didn't get that.
Is that what was laying back on the table back there?
Chris, you have it.
Yeah, I thought I saw something laying on the table coming in there.
Oh, that's a good point, I saw that. I wonder if it's just that it may be.
Uh-oh, you're on, you're on that list again now.
Thank you.
So, I guess I would say relative to the rates, one of the, the things that we're about three or four months into is getting exact play numbers. When we have 100 members play today, say that 100 played, we'll know how many of them were full family members, how many were executive members, you know, how many were over 80, 85. So, at this point next year, we'll actually be able to know if we want to look at the over 80 rate, we'll actually able to look at what is the under 80 player play? And then what does the 80 to 85 player play? And then we can kind of correspond how the play, we expect the play drops with aging, but we really don't have any tight numbers. And, and with those numbers, then I think we can take a more logical approach to that over, you know, those situations. I also think that with all that number in place, that would be the logical time to looking into different membership options. So, from talking to all the supervisors, I feel confident that we all would like to offer a six-month membership to our members that, you know, are just here six months as opposed to five. But whether that's financially viable for the club to do that and, and not lose money, there seemed to be a consensus that that would be hard to do. We could possibly look at having an individual six-month membership, you know, for this coming year. But my, my feeling is I would much rather look at all that next year holistically and look at every membership than, than to put one in here or there. Because as soon as you do one, then somebody asks like, why didn't you do this one? And why didn't you do that one? So, from talking to the supervisors, we don't have any proposition of a six-month membership. We can talk about it if we want to have a discussion.
Jim, I'd, I'd like, if, if I can interrupt you, if you could just go one, one at a time and we can.
Oh, perfect.
We can tell you here, yes or no.
You bet. Okay, so for the, for the golf memberships, we did, we did 3% across the board. And then basically the, the corporate membership, we don't have a number because I didn't even get a consensus that we want to have a corporate membership.
So, you want, right now?
I think we need, yeah, we definitely need to talk about the corporate membership and come to an agreement of whether we want to offer one and if we offer one, what it would be. The only consensus that I've gotten at all would be that, or even input I've got would be that there would be four people for around $10,000.
Is there, does anybody have any thoughts on the corporate membership? Yes, no? I mean, without, I mean, I can bring it up. I, I'll just say we, we won't have a corporate membership this year. Is that okay?
Well.
Any comment?
Well, I'd like to say that you can't sell something you don't have. So, the point, I think the issue here is, is we haven't sold any, but you can't sell something you don't have. So, if you have it there, it doesn't hurt anything if it's there. If nobody uses it, it's no big deal, one way or the other. $8,000 is too low. I think it should be more like 10 grand. And just, it's like anything else. You just put it there and see what happens. If nothing happens, fine, but give it a year to try anyway.
What do you guys think?
Kurt, are you talking about $10,000 for people?
Four people.
Right. And of course, being, being a corporation, you know they're going to pay a little bit more. But I, I just, my only worry about the thing is, is not, not the $10,000, not the four people, is how it, if we don't have any way of people to use that and beat us at our own game. You know, do they need to designate four people that's going to be on that corporate membership? Is it any four people in the corporation? What is a corporation? Do you want to get that?
I see what you're.
We may get four guys, but there's four guys sitting right there saying, all right, there's four in the corporation that sell donuts on Saturday morning and we can all play golf. What is that corporation?
Well, I, I think Shoemaker at the last meeting kind of explained that to us, that it would be a legitimate business, not just, to your point.
Yeah, yeah.
Four people would get together.
I asked him about that. I remember asking about that point, but it doesn't take much to incorporate in this state.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, I'm not CPA, but.
It'd have to be a legitimate corporation, LLC, whatever the, the makeup of the business is. The questions are, is it employees of the business? Who can designate? Who, who are the four people? I think that's a, a big question. It's, it's not that difficult to create a corporation in the state of Florida.
No, it isn't. But you're, you're leaning towards, is it going to be four specific people in the corporation? Or is it just any four people in the corporation? Or is it just any four people in the corporation? What are you thinking on that, Kurt?
I would say, there's four, here's the way I would look at it, and the way I think it works at other clubs, is that you have a four-person membership, you have four people that are on the deal, if you want to call it that. And then those four people can bring their business customers, whatever, you kind of use it as a business thing. So, one guy could bring three guests, so four people will play at all at that. But one of those four guys has to be part of the corporation.
Yeah.
And that's pretty much the way it works.
We had, that's exactly how we worked it at the Raven, it was exactly like that. One of us had to be there, and we could bring three of anybody we wanted.
Now, Florida Hospital is a very large corporation, so the president or the CEO here and the employees here are not owners of Florida Hospital Adventist Health Systems, okay? That's another, I'm just bringing that up.
Well, I would say the president or the CEO would be the figurehead of this organization.
Of this organization.
And he could appoint himself and three other people in his organization, that would be part of the membership. Simple as that.
I mean, if you wanted 80, I mean, $20,000.
Exactly.
Omar, do you have any thoughts?
I like the idea of being able to offer something, as Kurt said, if you don't have something to offer, then you can't sell it. My concern is that we need to, it could create a lot more problems as well. I don't know what kind of demand we've had for a corporate membership, in other words, inquiries that have come in to the operations here. And I realize Jim's only been here a few years, but I don't know that we've had a lot of requests for corporate memberships, which would be an indicated to me that if nobody's asking for it, they're probably not interested in it. Because they're asking if you offer it, and if we're not, if we say, "No, we're not offering it," then they're just going to back off. But if we say, "Yeah, we might be able to do something," they might join it. I think the key would be the pricing, as well as maybe the setup for, one of, if you establish a four-member corporation, or a membership, I should say, with four people, one would have to accompany the other three guests, or whomever, however you break that down. The other piece of it is, I guess, the pricing is a critical piece to that, because if there are people, I can guarantee it, there will be people that will create a corporate membership if they think they can beat the system, so you...
You have the opportunity to deny any requests that come in, so if you think somebody's playing, these four guys out here want to do that, you know it's not legit, you just refuse to accept it.
I'm not so sure I would want to get involved in that. You call foul on somebody and say, "Hey, they had this opportunity, but now you're denying me the opportunity." I don't think we want to get into that legal battle.
The reason I said this is because I think he needs to get this out. We certainly, I wanted to avoid this discussion again, because we talked about this the last time. I just think if we want to continue and want to do that, let's do that next year and have discussions on it, because we're talking about something, all of us, it sounds to me like we're all four different. I think we need to decide whether we even have it, and we'll bring it up and work on it for next year. But this is supposed to be simple, and it's not ending up simple.
Let me make a suggestion then. What if you price, there was discussion of 10,000, what if they say, and I'd have to run some numbers, say 12,000 and put it on the schedule? Okay? At least it might make it, it's there, they can make the inquiry into it. And if they're a legitimate corporation, they're going to think twice about how they buy this membership. They also get the benefit of writing it off, so I mean, you know, if it's legit, that's maybe an approach. I don't know. If not, then we can table it and look at it next year, that's the wishes of the board.
And then relative to David, so my understanding is if we list a corporate membership for four people for $12,000, and someone approaches us wanting it for less, for a different configuration, is that something we can...
No.
Consider?
No.
Okay, so this isn't, these aren't maximum, these aren't maximum fees here?
Not for membership.
Not for membership, okay.
The only thing about $12,000 is that's four singles. Join.
There's no benefit.
Yeah.
Make it 10, leave it in there, see what happens. You can take it out next year.
So, it really appears what we're weighing, if we weren't concerned about people exploiting this and incorporating and bringing three other people, then we definitely think a $10,000 corporate membership would be okay. But we're weighing that against the probability of someone having four people put together a corporate membership, and then they could all bring three guests at different times and possibly get, you know, 20 or $22,000 worth of benefit out of a $10,000 cost when they're not a corporation.
I think you're exaggerating the whole process here.
I'm asking a question. It doesn't matter to me, this is a total board decision, as far as I'm concerned. I don't have a recommendation as a vendor. It seems too problematic to me as a vendor.
I know what you guys are scared of, maybe.
I don't care, I just, I want to, I want to do something, and we spent like two meetings talking about the same stuff. You know, if somebody come up with something, make a motion, or do it, or vote it down. I mean, I thought we'd go through these things quick, but I guess...
I'll make a motion, we have a corporate membership for $10,000 for four people, and the application for the corporate membership comes through the board.
There you go. I second.
Okay. Is there something we should vote on? Okay.
Public comment?
Public comment?
Kurt, if I understood you correctly, if I am on the list as a corporate member, I can bring three guests and use the other three members' slots, or they pay guest fees?
No, they would come as members.
See, I've never seen that. Anytime I played with somebody that was on a corporate membership, they paid guest fees for me. So, that's one thing. The second thing...
Might be a little higher quality course than what we have here, you might be talking about.
I don't know, this is as high as anything within 25 miles. Okay, the other thing is, there has to be some legal term that could be put in there that speaks to more than a corporation, but an ongoing enterprise, which I think has a different legal definition. There has to be something going on, that's a form of business and not just four guys, so...
Well, I think...
I mean, I would think that was formidable without too much trouble.
Well, I think the fact that Wally said it has to go through the board, that just eliminates all this crap, if you will.
Well, if you don't get into, he got in and I didn't, I mean, that would be a concern I have there.
So what, I've been beat up before, that's...
Whatever.
I don't know, we're making a, we're making a mountain out of this thing.
Okay, we got an exception.
Okay, we got it, do we have a second? Kurt, second.
I second.
Go ahead, Chrissy.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Now, Jim, can you handle the six-month membership thing?
Sure. Well, a six-month membership, it was just, it was discussed at the last meeting. Financially, the only way that I think we could look at it and have it not be detrimental to the club would be if we only offered an individual six-month membership, which would be, so if we took the five-month membership and raised it, because the people that it's going to compete against, so if I'm 70 and I have a single, I'm now paying for the full year, I'm paying $31.58. As a five-month, as a single, I'm paying $23.28. So, if I go to six months, the real, the question is what would the number be if we want to offer that for just a single?
What I would do is take your $23.28, I don't have a calculator here, but divide it by five, whatever that number is, multiply it by six, because now you're taking a monthly rate and bumping it up to six, and then add a couple extra hundred bucks into it. And keep it somewhere under the $31.58, 2,900, for example.
It's 460 a month.
Now, so what's the number, Omar? You didn't do it?
No.
It's going to be 28, it's going to be around $2,800.
All right.
And then if you bumped it up a couple hundred, then it would be three grand, as opposed to 31...
Make it 2,950 then.
2,950.
I think if we go to six-month, things, we're going to lose a lot of full memberships.
That's my fear.
And I just, I'd like to have a motion to have a five or six month or not.
Okay.
You know, if we could do that.
You know, I'm going to recant what I just said, because he's absolutely right, and you mentioned earlier that you were going to use this year as a test year.
Yeah.
You're going to track everything, so just leave it the way it is, and then next year we'll be smarter.
Okay, so, public comment? Okay, Chrissy?
What?
This will be for...
We're not changing anything.
Oh, we're not going to change anything, okay. And the 80-year-old, we're going to track that this year too, right?
Yes, sir.
So, we'll leave that alone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what else, what else do we have?
The only change on there is a corporate membership, that's it. Everything else same.
Is there anything else, Jim, that's...
No, sir.
Okay.
You got a typo as well. Just a minor typo.
Years.
Years.
Oh, years.
Eighty and eighty-five.
It's mine.
Izards.
Sometimes your eyes jump to these things.
Okay, is that it, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to general fund. I have a memo attached to the general fund documents, so if you want to refer to that...
Is it this?
Yes, sir. The first item on my list, I have removed the RV storage area from the budget in the amount of $200,000, as recommended by the board at the last meeting. The clubhouse kitchen has been removed from the budget entirely at $1.2 million. Omar and Jim had already spoke to that. The next item on my list is the dog park. Supervisor Edgell presented information to staff about cost estimates and proposed location for the dog park. The park is proposed on Edgewater Drive, under the trees, so it's, well, there's a map, there's attached there for you. It's a total of .89 acres. The park will be separated into a small dog area and a large dog area with fencing, benches, water station. Vehicle parking is recommended at the area where the cart barn is currently located. That is a nice shell rock area, and we, in looking into the ADA rules, which is American Disabilities Act, we can, I'll let Drew speak about it a little bit, we can construct a parking space for a handicap vehicle with concrete to where that person can, it's 700 feet from the cart barn area where the handicap parking space will be created to the entrance of the dog park, so it's not too far. It'll be completely accessible with the wheelchair from that parking space to the dog park area.
Do, does that walkway there now, that goes along Edgewater, is that ADA approved? The width and everything?
The sidewalk should be ADA compliant.
Yes.
What we were going to do before we got everything permitted, we have a smart level at the office, and the only thing I'm concerned with is make sure the cross slope meets the 2% or less. But as long as that's fine, we can utilize that. The ADA doesn't have any specific limits on how far away, how far ADA-capable parking space has to be or needs to be. They just note it needs to be in the immediate vicinity, or if there is a parking lot, they want it closest possible to the entrance. But this is kind of, the whole area we can designate as a park, so if we put our ADA spaces by the cart barn, it's accessible to everywhere along that run.
Yeah, they can walk the dogs outside the park.
Yeah, so the main, the main, yeah, they can, they should be able to walk anywhere, and we can put up the, I don't know what you call it, little stations?
Station.
Have the little, yeah, and they can, the main thing for the dog park we're designating, they can run free and don't have to have the leashes, and the owners can...
The only thing I wanted to bring up on this was that Tanya's been able to secure a possible grant, which will cover half the cost of this place. And so that, we might want to consider that. Now, that opens it up to all Highlands County, I realize that too, it doesn't leave, it's not Mike, so, I doubt that we two people are driving anyway. The other thing I'd like to get to is the galvanized fencing, Drew, the six-foot, I'm always worried about the large dogs getting in or out of there, one of the other, and so I'd like to see that there. And the other thing is, Mike, you're going to have to mow that, so is those gates going to be large enough into the beater park to get it mowed?
We figured that out already, we would probably have one on the one end that can in and out easy with the mower, with the right one.
I'm good.
So, it'll be quick.
Yeah, oh, and...
Yeah, have a big gate.
Yeah, the big, yeah, that goes, you need to get into both sides. And the other thing was, Drew, is we talked about out there, about securing the fencing to the ground, and after having the armadillo problems on around my house, I think we really need to secure that down around there. And that's it, I think after about 10, 12,000 bucks, I think you can have a dog park.
I guess I have a question about galvanized over vinyl coated, what's the longevity? Why is one better than the other?
Well, I looked into the fence, it'll just blend in more to the area, if we go with the black vinyl covering the, it's a cover, actually, what it ends up being. It just blends into the area much better, easier to maintain.
So, it's more of a visual...
Right, exactly.
...enhancement versus the longevity.
Yeah, it's an aesthetic thing.
Yeah.
I guess I was just the opposite of you, I was questioning why you need a six-foot fence. I mean, I never built a dog park before, but frankly, I've never seen one of six-foot fence.
Well, the figures we got, we got a four, a five, and a six. You know, I actually thought we should go with a five, that was high enough, of course, I got a, I got a small dog, so he's not jumping in anyways, but...
Look at that, you see that?
Yeah.
He just jumped right in there.
I could go, I'm just saying that at four feet, you take a large dog, they can jump. If it's five feet, you take it, I got no problem with that, I just didn't want the four because of possibly getting it...
And I agree with the four foot, I think the five foot's, you know, fine, although, you know, we have a five foot out back, and I saw a deer, the deer, they jumped it like it was nothing.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, I mean, they, you know, but I think the five would be fine.
Mike, it's a dog park, not a deer park.
Well, we may, well, we got owls over there too. But I mean, I think it'll be really good for the community, people really want a place. I mean, we get questions all the time.
I think it's, yeah, no, I definitely think it's great for the community. There's a few things in here that I, I kind of went back over, and one of them was the Booker, is it Booker? Brooker, Brooker, whoever.
Brooker, yeah.
Now, it's going to be in an area where there's trees.
Yes.
So, I mean, there's a benefit there, but it's also could potentially, they kind of had a little disclosure in their estimate that if they run into roots or anything like that, the pricing could change, and I get that. Why can't we, just out of curiosity, they're talking about removing some of the sheds over here, the cart barn, the individual, and having the parking over there because of the new maintenance facility, they said, "Well, they won't have to use those." Well, maybe in a future date, if we're looking at some of these stay-in-plays and whatnot, why would we do away with a storage area for carts? I mean, do we not use that? I mean, I know a few people that use it.
Very few, well, I don't even think we're using half of them for storage for carts. We have, and I was telling, ten, yeah.
Eight?
Yeah, eight or 10 just over there that we're using now. There's some empty, and the uses a bunch, so, I mean, the uses of what it used to be and it is now is not there anymore.
Okay, so you feel that those people that are using that will be able to store everything in a new maintenance facility?
Oh, absolutely.
With no problem?
Yeah.
Okay. The other question then I have is just going through some of the logistics on this, is to understand, could we potentially use the parking, oh, I'm going to run Billy, the parking area out in front of the community center?
For handicap?
Instead of creating, instead of creating a new parking area, whether...
We were trying to put it, it's like 700 feet from that area, and I think, Drew, you can answer, I think it's like 1,300 the other way, so we were trying to put it closer. We were trying to avoid for coming off of Edgewater, you know, so we got as close as we could do it, that's all. My opinion, most of the people are going to come up with golf carts anyways.
I was going to say, they'll only be walking, and they're going to come with golf carts. On the other part that Wally brought up when he originally did this proposal, I think it was Wally, the idea was not to put the golf cart, the dog park, I should say, too close to the AT&T. Now you're putting a parking area in there... too close to the AT&T, now you're putting a parking area in there where vehicles could be going in and out, it's not gonna, believe me.
Well, vehicles coming in and out right now.
You are not gonna come in and out.
They come in and out all the time now, you know, I mean, we're only talking two spots, Mark, so...
Oh, I thought you were knocking down all of the sheds.
No, 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 not right now, that's, that's vision down the road.
I was gonna say, I didn't think you were knocking down.
No.
I didn't know, I did.
I think we can get away with one handicap spot.
Share.
Right.
I think...
We could get away with one, I mean...
No, that's fine, I'm all for it. You're gonna do the maintenance, you're gonna do the spray?
Well, we're doing the maintenance now, I mean, you know, we're mowing anyways.
But you'll do all the maintenance, you'll do all the spraying for ticks and all of that stuff, because you have to do that.
You know, we're spraying there now, and what we have to do, I mean, so...
And is that your own risk, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I would be...
Self-locking gates, though, they lock on their own and stuff.
In my opinion, I'd be totally, totally against getting any funding for this, because you open it up to the whole community outside of Sun and Lake, and I would rather us pay the extra money than to take funding for this.
Well, the reason I would agree with that is, is this was part of our marketing strategy too, that people, if they possibly buy a house in Sun and Lake, one thing they can do is they realize, hey, they got a little dog walk park.
No, I think it's not.
A lot of people have those little dogs now, if you open their, I don't know what their calls and walk calls, I just know a lot of people have dogs.
Well, you can always apply for the...
In my opinion, and my opinion, as a resident, I absolutely agree with you, Mark, I would rather keep it for Sun and Lake only, and not take the money.
Is there a time limit on applying for a grant? I mean, if you build it, and five years later you want the money, can you do it?
No, no, I don't know that there's a time limit, but I wouldn't go five years later down the road.
Well, I'm just using that as an example, I don't know.
Well, we don't have it right now, we didn't build any cost to secure it, secure the facility, so anybody can come, it doesn't matter if they're from Lake Placid, they can still bring their dogs here, we don't have a way to monitor it, we don't have a way to secure it. If we had a secured key system to where they have to register the animals, that's a whole other, you know, budget and ballgame, so we have to realize our lands are public, and we, I mean, we could have a sign for Sun and Lake residents only, but it's still...
Reality is, how many people would actually bring their dog in here?
Right, yeah.
If you live down Tanglewood, they got their own dog park, so they wouldn't come, so...
True, that's true.
I don't see where that'd be an issue.
We can, we can talk about the reimbursement side later, this is, this discussion today is just to get the 20,000 into the budget that we currently don't have.
Take it out of the pergo and move it over.
Take it out of the TVs you already took out.
Okay, what, what you guys is, what's your desire?
I think we ought to move it into the budget.
Oh, absolutely.
And also put a note down at the bottom that I don't own a dog.
Day after day.
Nor an RV.
Me either.
Or an RV or trailer. We're doing this for the people.
We're doing it for the people.
That's right.
Okay, do we address the pergola now too, or, okay? What you guys' thoughts on keeping the...
All right, I say, I say we have to keep it, for a couple reasons, it enhances the environment of the people that live here, because they can go out there now, have a drink, conversed, enjoy, relax, versus the one on the island, which is not accessible, I mean, you got a driveway up here, you could actually put a phone in there, which you go to the bar, and you can sit out there and say, yeah, bring me four beers out here, and, I mean, actually enjoy. And obviously, we've already got the TV funding, the $16,000, we're taking that out, so there you go. I also think that it would increase revenues, I think you would get more weddings, you'd get more events, because your venue is better, nicer than anybody else, and doesn't say that if we rent whatever the costs are and how they do the weddings, that you can't jack that up a hundred bucks or a couple hundred bucks and slowly get your, your investment back. It's just another enhancement of the community that sets us apart from everybody else, and I think we'd definitely get more revenue from weddings, because when people start looking at the different venues that they can pick from, we're gonna be number one. And obviously, we're competitive, right, in terms of rates, so there's no reason for them not to come here, if we had something like that.
Can I say something to add with Kurt? Also, right now, they're putting tents up there, so that's a cost also, okay, so that cost is to put chairs out there, you know, I did this package, we did the same thing, we had to park the same thing, and we tripled how many, how many times that we rented that park, once we put a neighborhood where people could get married, on, you know, I mean, I mean, right now, the pavilion we have back there, it's really hard to get older people out there, because we have the, the bridge, then, then we have to come from the bridge all the way up. I agree with Kurt 100% that it'll be easier to sell a wedding if you put something out here permanent.
Okay, is there any supervisor comments? I guess not, so, we need a motion.
I make a motion to remove it from the budget.
Need a second? I guess it dies for a second.
I make a motion, we leave it in the budget.
Need a second?
So now what happens? Still there?
It's in the budget, the motions, both motions just failed.
So it stays.
Well, how to get there to begin with, I mean, it can't just, I mean, no, well, yeah, but we never said to put it in.
You know, things, how do things get in these budgets?
We didn't vote to put it, put it in the budget.
Well, there's a lot of stuff in the budget, you don't know.
Things came up at the last meeting, things came up at the last meeting and the previous meeting, and the next thing I do is I look at the budget, and it comes over to, nobody, there was a discussion on it, the next thing I know, it's in the budget, it mysteriously appears. Now, I know that 20,000 for the pergola was discussed and said, put it in, and the board said that. You know, it is a budget process, there's a lot of validity in what Kurt says about enhancing things, but at the same token, for crying out loud, we're trying to, we're trying to do things here to keep it reasonable, we're trying to show a return, be it tangible or intangible, and we keep spending money like crazy here, you know? It's just, it's very, very frustrating to see how things are wasted. Maybe we can do that next year, maybe not, I don't know, but...
I'm not sure wasted is the right word, but...
I guess I could step down and second it, can I?
Yes, sir. If there's one. Yes, you can second, yes.
So you wanna make another motion, somebody?
We can go back to the original motion?
Huh?
Mark's original motion, he would need to make another motion.
I would need to make another motion, somebody else can make it, right?
Somebody else can make it, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion, and we leave it in the budget.
I second. Public comment? Okay, go ahead.
So does that mean your dog park goes away?
No.
Oh, you're just gonna add another 20,000 in there, is what you're saying, Mike, okay?
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
No.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
No.
All right, motion failed.
We can, we can move into advertising briefly if you want to, or we can, is there any other line items in the budget on the general fund that you wanna talk, talk about? I have incorporated some monies into our advertising budget with a carryover of $15,000 unspent funding from this year.
Can I ask you a question right there? Why didn't we spend the money? I mean, we budgeted, we do all this budget process, we say, put money here, put money here, put money here.
We have an answer for that, go ahead.
Why don't we spend it?
There was, we decided not to do the Sebring races this year, so that was $5,000 for that. We haven't had a billboard to change out, and that's a part of that budget as well. There's also, there was, there was budget in there for something we usually do with the Sebring chamber, that's not happening this year.
Okay, that's a good enough answer, I'm just curious why we don't do things, but you made a decision, it's not a good investment, so you didn't do it, good for you.
So, after the meeting with Henry Delosier, Jim and I both reached out to him by phone, and he decided to submit us a proposal by email, and attached is Delosier's presentation or proposal to us about services. So I'm not recommending, you know, use Delosier or use Buffalo in, in this conversation today, this is just to create enough budget so that if we do decide to move forward with Delosier's proposal, we can do so.
I've got a couple questions.
Will there be more discussion with the board on, on some of these things with Henry?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, definitely, yes.
I guess question I got, I can see the 37,000, first of all, I'm in favor of marketing, obviously, I always wanna make this place better, but, so 37,000 is from Henry, and then you've got 63,000 in the budget, is that right? 69, 63, whatever the number is?
With the carryover of 15, we'll have 63,000.
So how do you get from 37 to 69 when Buffalo is $4,000 a month, and I'm not sure, what do I get for $4,000 a month? I mean, it says a retainer, but does that include just their overhead, or does that include all the advertising they're gonna do? I mean, what do I, what do I get for four grand?
It includes everything it takes to, to put together our PR and execute it, a public relations plan and execute it for each month.
So they talk about regional advertising, so that's not included in that, right? That's just the overhead part of putting an ad in a magazine someplace, is that right?
To my knowledge, with conversations with Shane, if we pay them $4,000, that's going to cover our costs for everything that they do on our behalf.
Overhead?
Yes.
So it doesn't pay for the, the actual ad itself?
No, to my knowledge, it does pay for the ad, it does pay for everything that they do on our behalf, and I can clarify that with him, but that's, that's my...
But I, I still don't get, because this consideration, as they call it, goes to September 30th of next year, so that this fiscal year, so if we implement that, that's $48,000, so 48 and 37 doesn't add up to three.
We're not recommending to start Buffalo October 1st, it would be mid-year.
Okay, that's fine.
So that's, that's why the numbers don't add up.
Again, I don't have a problem with doing this, but here's my real problem. My real problem is, when was, when was Henry here, was he here in April or May or whatever it was?
He was here like May 5th, I believe.
What was his number one comment to us that we're doing wrong right now, today? He said our website was not focused on women. Is that correct? You guys agree with that?
That's a true statement.
I got something to add to that.
And you look at our website today, and they have not made one friggin' change.
Yeah.
So my problem here is not the marketing and the expenditure of it, my problem is the implementation of it. I mean, we're gonna spend all this money to get, find out how we're supposed to go down the road, and then nothing gets done. That's my biggest concern right here, I'm, I'm, you wanna save some money, to me, this is a, they haven't proven to me that this is a good investment, let's put it that way.
We had a marketing meeting, and I brought that up, I brought up, said, I just got off there, the website, and went over it, and Jim was there, because Billy Casper puts up website together.
And?
And I told him, I said, there's one picture of a woman on there, and she's not even from here.
Right.
And I said, also, that golf course rendition, it's, it's awful.
Well, it's one-third Sun and Lake and two-thirds Billy Casper.
That's what it always...
You know, what's going on with this whole thing?
So I mentioned that to Jim, and they were there, when I mentioned Jim, that that's gotta change, that has got to change, because that's what Henry told us to do, and we haven't done one thing to do it. And it falls back, maybe we haven't been paying attention to Billy Casper, but they've got to do it, and I even said, Mark, I said, we have, like, scheduling in there, it's a picture of them, the math, the monthly schedule, I said, if it says we're gonna have a Christmas golf tournament right here, why doesn't it reflect up to another site you can click on where you put all Mark's pictures in there, to let people know what we do? And I gave examples of those things to them. I would say, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, I would say, you guys gotta keep an eye on him, Billy Casper, to get that changed, and I mean, now, those people are looking at it.
To Neil, how do we, I mean, Buffalo Communications has been bounced around quite a bit, at least over the past year, how do we arrive at them as one of the people to put some money, in other words, to throw some money at as far as a public relation and advertising? How did we come about with their name?
Well, about, about four years ago, Dick Miller invited them to come down, Ron Wonderling arranged the meeting, and Shane has been following and touching base, and we had Dick Miller and myself and Shane met about three times, and then Dick Miller's health started to fail, and then it kind of just changed, still kept in contact with me, and I know that in that time, their, their corporation changed as well, the time that he came and submitted an initial proposal, they were way out of our ballpark, and so as their corporation changed, he came back to me, I think it was last summer, and said, you know, we have the ability to do more of what's in your scope of what, you know, maybe budgetary, for budgetary purposes, because we started at it, $150,000 to $200,000 was the least amount that they could offer a proposal for, and now we're down to more of a reasonable range that we, something we may be able to afford with them, and still, you know, get the most out of their services.
Okay, thank you. Now, you said roughly four years ago was when the, I'm trying to remember, was, it wasn't Casper at the time, was it Kitson at that time?
I think they had just...
Right at the custom?
It was, yeah, I think that's how that, yeah, Ron was general manager at the time on Wonderling.
I think, yeah, okay, I think it's, obviously, you can have companies that can provide a service, I just have a little bit of a problem, since this is a Billy Casper company, that we would be putting more money to them to do advertising and PR for us, when we're already paying them a fee, and why we wouldn't look maybe at other advertising and PR firms? I remember, and I was just, it was, I was relatively new at the time, maybe six years ago, and you're gonna have to correct me, but we spent almost a quarter of a million dollars on a program where they came in with helicopters, and they did this, and they did that, I think Wolf was in charge, wasn't she here at the time?
Mm-hmm.
Anyway...
$250,000?
Yes, and where did we get for it? A lot of nice, pretty brochures, probably not one new resident.
Yeah, but he said we got a CD.
Yeah, we got a CD, so, I mean, I'm just trying to look at all of these things, I'm kinda saying what Kurt is also saying, you know, we get these things, we get, Delosier comes in and says this, 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 and this, they go and talk to Casper, and we can't even get the basic stuff put on the website, but yet we wanna go out and spend all of this money on PR and advertising, and we don't even know what we're getting.
Well, and quite honestly, you know, we would have to send this out to RFP anyway, so this was just a proposal that Shane has put together for us, because he knew that things had changed within their realm and his capabilities for coming to something that was a little more affordable for us, that maybe something we would try, and then if it worked, build on it, you know, the next year, we might, you know, add more and do more with them, but that was, you know, Shane has just been in contact, and when Dick and I met with him, Dick expressed his concerns about spending that $250,000, and it got us nothing, you know, six, seven years ago, so he was, he had all the information and knew... So he was, he, he had all the information and knew what that company had done and had not done for us, and, um, Dick, you know, really expressed those concerns. Um, so, you know, whether we go with Buffalo or not is, you know, the board's decision, but we would have to send this out to RFP anyway.
I understand it would have to go to an RFP.
Yeah. This is just to create budget today, so we certainly can look at other companies, absolutely.
The, the consulting part of this would not be in RFP, right? Because it's consulting? Do you still have to do an RFP? I mean, can we say?
I'm gonna look into our purchasing policies on that and probably talk with David Schumaker as well before I make any recommendations.
I'm just, I just want to make sure the board's involved in this, especially with Henry.
Absolutely.
After I would never have to meet with them, stuff like that, and I went over all this and tried to figure out where in the world we're going. Uh, I got down to section seven, owned media, coordinate with SNL's website administrator.
Okay, you on there?
Uh, in here, where they're talking about that we're, uh, Buffalo made their offer.
Page number?
Uh, sixteen.
Okay, thank you.
And, and that's what I was saying the other day to Jim, I said, "Who, who's putting this website together?" And so, now they're talking about, oh, buy another piece of Billy Casper, and they're gonna get to the website administrator. And I don't know, you guys, you got a couple coming up there. But you need to put money into budget for something. This marketing is critical.
No, I don't mind leaving the money there, it's just, I'm not sold on this class.
It's like I told Tanya, we can't market anything until we get these lots. I mean, we can do a little, we can start, but we need, we need control of them lots.
I do have an update from the county, by the way, and there's really no, no movement on trying to create a website or find a website that they can list these properties on at this time. So, uh, it's, they are at a budget freeze right now, and that means all departments at Highlands County is in a budget freeze, including the county attorney's office. So, uh, they are, there's no real movement on that.
So what, what portion of the sixty-some thousand would you plan on paying to Buffalo? Do you have a number for me?
Four a month.
I know, but they said it's.
Twenty-four would be six months, yeah, at four thousand.
I'd say, get the, get the strategy done and then worry about marketing later, another year.
Yeah.
Our strategic, excuse me, strategic plan is the most important to come up with for us to move forward, absolutely.
Yeah.
So, so take twenty, in my opinion, take twenty-four out of that, whatever that is, and then plan on going ahead with the strategy portion of it, which would still be put out to bid, right?
Correct.
Assuming, okay. It's up to you guys.
What do you guys think?
I think you gotta put the sixty-three in there just in case you do hire Henry, if there's something else we need to give him, because he's a guru on this whole thing. He's, maybe you gotta build forty thousand houses, seventeen golf courts.
Well, I don't have a problem with Henry, that's for sure.
Yeah, yeah, and so maybe, maybe we need some money, extra monies in just in case something comes up with the Buffalo.
Okay, leave it alone, I don't care. But I'd have a real problem spending it with Buffalo, let's put it that way. That's where my real issue is.
Yeah.
Okay, understood, thank you.
That's, that brings up one thing, Mr. President, you need to put someone to be on that marketing committee.
Okay. I shall do that one of these days. When we get a new supervisor.
The, uh, the last thing that I have, Omar might have a few things, but on the roads and drainage, we have eliminated any paving from our budget. We, um, we looked at this hard, we feel like that our, the roads and the condition assessment that the county has provided us, uh, we're, we're not in critical condition levels with our roads, and we're recommending to take out the 1.2 miles that we recommended until such time that we can do more miles of roads here in the district. Uh, we will, we do need to fix the parking lot, once the golf maintenance crews are moved out, we need to fix that. Got a few other maintenance items to take care of, but we are recommending to move that out. Our budget currently is balanced with the exception of we are, we are recommending to pay for the tractor with the sidearm mower using our reserve funding in an amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we're much closer than we were, uh, last month.
And we're talking about some of these other things that's in the budget next in the 25th, right? Like your raise and some of that other stuff?
Yes, we can do that, yes.
I got, I just wanna make one comment. You got a letter here from Polston Engineering about not extending Cortez Boulevard, which I agree with 100%. If we can't do it first class all the way, why do it at all? But my real point that I wanna bring up is, if we do decide to do Cortez, I would like it to be in the minutes that we should entertain the fact that it's a gated entrance. And I've, I proposed this a couple of years ago, and Sean McClure said we couldn't do it, uh, because it's public. But I have found out since then that you can gate a community and give the appearance that it is a gated community, but if somebody comes and wants to enter the community, they can do so. Um, so my point is, and I'm just talking about Cortez, really, I was suggesting about four different entrances around here and leaving Sunning Lake open all the time, but, but by gating it there is you would have resident-only entrance, everybody can leave, but only residents could actually use Cortez, and you do it with a barcode reader system. And to me, that would create a very secure entrance in the back where you don't want people coming in back there and, and going down Cortez and wherever else they're gonna go. So I just wanna plant a seed, if you will, that if we ever get to that point, we, I should consider it being gated as well, so.
Is the board okay with not performing the Cortez road extension for right now?
Yeah, I, Drew isn't here, huh? He left.
I'm sorry?
Drew left?
Yeah.
Unless he's hiding somewhere. Okay. I was just wondering why the county wouldn't permit this. In his letter to you, he said, "The county is aware of this and will likely not permit the connection to Schumacher in its current state." So is that because at the end of the road, they're afraid of erosion and things of that nature?
I know that Drew had multiple conversations with Gator Howerton, so they have concerns, and, um, I'm not saying they will or will not, I think there is a likelihood after the conversations have transpired that they will not, but we don't know that for a fact.
Okay, well.
Well, they got a mess there now anyway. They gotta take care of every month.
We discussed it at the time, uh, when we actually chose not to pave Schumacher up to Cortez, and we kinda discussed it a little bit. Uh, Hanley was here, and he said, "Well, I don't know if we would be able to do the, the pricing that, that fifty thousand was allocated." And then they said, "But you could do it privately," uh, was my recollection from that meaning, "We could have it done privately through a private concern." And now, we potentially couldn't get permitted for it because the county doesn't want us to put that through, according to this?
According to their letter, that, that is the conversations that transpired. Uh, you know, could the road be built? I know I felt the road could be built, but common sense-wise, do we want a new road that's gonna butt up to a shell rock? And then that letter, you know, does provide the, you know, the concerns that the county has. So if you want me to try to get a more definite, I, I'd be glad to do that.
No, I, and I appreciate what you're saying, and I, and I understand that going up to a dirt road could, it could erode away at the end where you turn, and does that make perfect sense to do it? Uh, what I object to is the fact that the county is now, because we decided not to do and contribute fifty thousand dollars to Schumacher paving, now they're saying, "Well, sorry, guys, we're not gonna permit you maybe." That's all I'm saying.
Good point.
I guess I didn't take it that way.
Is that it?
Yes.